I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gracious heaven, the Father, Creator of all things and Author of truth, Father, we thank you so much for the blessings for this county and the residents within it. We particularly thank you for the moisture you've brought to us, to this parched land. Father, we're thankful too that we have the freedoms that we have within this state and this country. Father, we ask that you be with us as we go about the business of the county and particularly as we represent the taxpayers. And Father, we ask for your continued blessings on all the families represented here. And we bring all of our requests and all of our praises to you through your son, Jesus. Amen.
You may be seated. Well, good morning, everyone. Beautiful, beautiful day in mid-May with overnight moisture that tells me that if it does that again tonight, I want to trade a Honda pickup truck for a motorboat. So we had anywhere from sixty hundreds out in the county up to over four inches. So we're always, always grateful for moisture. With that said, we need to consider our agenda today, and I'd entertain a motion.
Second.
A motion and a second to adopt the motion, to adopt the agenda as is printed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? That carries. Our consent agenda, anything need to be pulled from it, or is it good to go?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion and a second on the consent agenda, a discussion. Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, I understand in order to do a technical bit here, we need a motion. So Dory, help us out exactly how this motion needs to be placed in our minutes.
For the bids that were accepted at the last meeting, we just need a motion that authorizes you to sign the closing paperwork and related contracts.
Hearing, hearing the suggestion, I entertain a motion.
No move, Mr. Chairman. Second.
And a second, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That also carries. It is public comment time, and that is on our agenda for things not on the agenda. If you have some matter, some concern, some whatever, now's your opportunity. Anybody with public comment? Quiet, quiet bunch. All right, thank you. First order of business is Emergency Solutions Grant. So whoever's going to make that presentation, you come forward and please, for the record, identify yourself and go from there.
Hi, I'm Nicole Butler. I'm with Compass Behavioral Health. I'm the CSS supervisor.
Good. We welcome you to our meeting.
Thank you.
So the floor is yours.
Okay. Compass Behavioral Health is applying for the Emergency Solutions Grant for the third year. We plan to remit a 2021 application for fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Fifteen thousand of that will be for homeless prevention, which will help provide rental assistance, utility assistance, and rental arrears. Forty-one thousand of that would be for rapid rehousing, which would be twenty-five thousand for rental assistance, ten thousand for security deposits, three thousand seven fifty for utility, and one thousand two fifty for utility assistance. And then there'll be administration and HMIS, which is data entry funding for that as well. So this funding provides a unique and much-needed opportunity to make a significant dent in the number of individuals experiencing mental illness who are homeless in our communities. Compass will continue to work with state and local partners to best utilize the funding. So we are here to ask for an authorized signature on a certification of local government approval for nonprofit organizations receiving 2021 Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG funding.
Okay. I'm going to make a comment and then ask the board for any input. It almost appears that we have some duplication in that we just finished one program for granting funds for homeless people or people who couldn't meet their rent, and this is not, not aimed at you. I'm just making a statement of, an observation that we seem to have almost duplicate programs providing the same funding to the same people. So with that, I'll entertain any remarks from other board members.
Yes, Chairman, I serve ex officio on the Compass Mental Health Board, so I'm familiar with this grant and the way it's used. Folks involved, as Nicole is, have direct contact with clients with mental challenge. And a lot of these folks could not possibly navigate the state rental assistance program or even our program that we, of course, have closed. So I know that you're coordinating with the state, and there is a lot of money out there for rental assistance beyond this limited grant.
Yes, and ours is, like you said, specifically for target, in the target-specific population, which is those that do have a severe and persistent mental illness. And yes, we do coordinate with the state, and there are more funds that are out there, but this is just a little bit that we utilize within our mental health agency to be able to provide support to those others that would not be able to navigate.
And a lot of it's pretty immediate assistance.
Yes, rapid rehousing is immediate.
Like today.
We served eleven clients in the Garden City area, and six of those were from the shelter to provide immediate housing for them. Otherwise would have been homeless.
Thank you for the clarification. Any other comments?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to allow you to sign the Emergency Solutions ESG grant for 2021.
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up on our agenda, Roxanne, would you step forward, please, and introduce your, your...
Fair Board of Representatives.
...eight of candidates here.
So we're asking today that you approve Trista Joyce and Casey Donahue to the Finy County Fair Board. Both of them, I believe, are going to be huge assets. Casey is a Holcombe resident, and Trista lives here in Garden City. So good representation from both sides, and as you can see, we're on the fair board. So I'm pretty excited about the changes that are going on.
We have a, we have a comment here. Hang on just a minute.
Mister, Mister Chairman, I think we all know Trista, but I'd like to point out that Casey's been coming to these meetings for a year, maybe two years now. It's been quite a while that she's been...
She's been coming to them quite frequently, yes.
As a guest, not as a voting member, but as a participant in these fair board meetings. So she definitely has an interest in them. Be proud to prove in front of the commission that we appoint Trista Joyce and Casey Robinson to the Finy County Fair Board.
A motion. Lon, do you want to address something?
I would second the motion because mine are just housekeeping questions, so I would add my second to that. And I may ask you this each time, and forgive me if it's a repeated question, but do they have stated terms? I mean, we're appointing them to the fair board, and I know it's been difficult to get people on the fair board, but by the bylaws and so forth.
And I, I'll have to get that information for you because, Lon, I don't know that answer. I'm sorry.
I was just curious if they're like a four, a four-year term or a three-year term or...
I honestly do not know.
That'd be good, just to let us know some...
I will.
...what that is. And then secondly, again, this is kind of back to the bylaws. Is there a maximum number that the fair board's supposed to have, and what does this get you to with these two appointments?
This takes us up to seven. I believe per our bylaws, we can have up to twenty-one members, but we're not quite there.
Well, I didn't...
We're working on it.
I didn't figure you were close to the maximum, but I just didn't.
I believe it's twenty-one members.
You might clarify both of those things in an email to us or something, just...
Will do.
So we're aware. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
But as I have stated before, for, but for those out in, in the land of electronic meetings, the fair board used to have a, if you will, a requirement of a member from each township. That's been difficult. So it's now more, more general space.
Well, I think we have good representation from all the different areas right now, but you're right. We haven't been specific as to what township they belong to or district, but I think, looking over the board, I'm trying to think where everybody lives, we have a really good diverse group.
Any other discussion before we take a vote? If not, then all those in favor of these two people, incoming members of the fair board, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Alicia, it is your turn.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, what I have before you today is a waiver from the Finy County subdivision regulations and the environmental code. Mister Gary Spikes would like to create a subdivision with lots that are less than two acres. He will do this in two phases. The property is zoned real residential, which in the zoning regulations, they can go as little as half an acre. However, in our subdivision regulations and our environmental code, it is a minimum of two acres, and that is with an ATU septic system. They can go smaller than two acres if they are connected to a public water supply. However, Mister Spikes is proposing that each lot have their own septic tank and water well. Currently, the future land use shows that this area be real residential, two acres minimum, is what our future land use and our comprehensive plans show. Right now, he is here, Mister Spikes, and Ken are here. If you have questions for him. Staff is unable to recommend approval just because it is less than the two acres. They won't be connected to a public water supply. They will have a hundred and fifty-foot no well access easement. So if you scroll down to the very last PDF, I believe... Yeah, keep going. You're fine. One more. One more. You can see where they're going to, they show where the well can go. So anywhere in that hundred and fifty foot, they wouldn't be allowed to put the well. Is that correct? And so they kind of show where they would want the septic tanks. Like I said, they are doing this in two phases. This is at Farmland Road in Mary. So this is just east of Chapel Heights addition. I'll let Ken, Ken come up and, and talk for Mister Spikes.
Morning, Ken.
I'm Ken Parks with Cornerstone, representing Gary and Chuck Spikes.
Speak right into the mic. It's a little tough to...
I have to bring it to tall people level. I'm representing Gary and Chuck Spikes. I'm Ken Parks with Cornerstone. What Gary and Chuck have created is what they hope is an alternative or a reason for reducing the acreage from two to just a little over one point seven acres per lot, which allows them to have twenty-seven percent more lots than what they would otherwise. Of course, the separation requirement's a hundred feet between water wells and septic tanks, septic systems at this time. So he's providing a hundred and fifty feet, and the extra fifty feet allows for future relocations of the septic laterals at least twice, which puts us out at forty or sixty years from now. And at that time, perhaps the city has grown that extra half a mile to the east so that this subdivision would be either adjacent to the city or brought into the city. And at that time, would probably have water and sewer service. So the septic system is probably, at least in our, our view, is just temporary. But also, even if it's not, there's, like I said, there's several places, there's plenty of room to be able to relocate the septic systems and still maintain sufficient distance away from the water wells. And there's plenty of room to redrill a well if need be to. So we feel like there's sufficient room on a one point seven acre lot to have a well and a septic system. So we're asking for that waiver to be able to do that.
Ken, before you leave the podium, do you have room for, for one septic system for one house of what size?
We're running, with an ATU, you can run two laterals, and we're running those at a hundred feet long.
These are all ACU units?
They'd have to be the ACU, right, because of under the five acres.
And now, this coffee shop talk, but there is a life expectancy even on an ACU unit. So can we come to some sort of a, of an agreement, it might be twenty years, twenty-five years, thirty, whatever, that then you have another place to go for a second ACU unit?
Right. But like we were saying, we got a hundred and fifty feet, so we got fifty foot to play with in both directions around that septic system so that allow for that room to relocate.
Again, let me get right to my point. What scares me is I look at your, your footprint, and I don't see an alley one or an easement to run these sewer lines and whatnot that you're advocating are going to maybe be there in twenty or thirty years.
That's a good point, Chairman.
So I guess I'm less excited about that, that footprint than, than others because to me, we need to somehow look off into the future a little farther than, than this first go-around with a house and a septic tank.
I agree.
Anyone else have a comment?
A question, have you, did they look into having just one central water source, you know?
Not a central water source. We looked at extending the city's water system, and the cost is just, even though it's within half a mile, three quarters of a mile of this, of the site presently, the cost was still, felt it was too prohibitive to do at this time.
And a central water source, same, same problem, too expensive? If they, they were the water provider?
Didn't analyze that, to know the cost of that?
We have the developers here present, correct?
Right. This Gary Spikes to my left.
If there's something that you'd like to offer that we're, we're not understanding, well, this is your opportunity. Come to the, come to the podium, please, and identify yourself.
Excuse me. Gary Spikes? Okay, yeah, we added the extra fifty foot above and beyond what the county requires now to a hundred and fifty foot separation. That'll let us relocate new leach lines and all that, new tank, everything, and still stay within the county a hundred feet. Or move the well, and there's plenty of room to move the well around and still stay away from the septic system. By going with roughly one and three-quarter acres, we're able to make the lots more affordable to people. It'll increase, if we have to go up to the two-acre deal, it will increase the lots roughly twenty-seven percent on the cost. Makes it out of reach for some people, or at least not as attractive to some people. It also drops the number of lots by twelve, and I don't know what that does tax-wise, but the additional twelve lots would be more, more, be able to be taxed more. There would be, we're looking at fifty-five to fifty-six lots versus forty-three to forty-four lots at the two-acre deal.
And...
I believe our water table, in that area, the static water level is down to, oh, probably a hundred and seventy or eighty feet now. And this ground is very adaptable. It's, it's the kind of ground that a septic system works well on. It is a sandy loam. I believe that the one and three-quarter acres would be sufficient, and the septic system, we can maintain separation, and we got at least a fifty-year deal there if, if it should go that long, which I'm sure it wouldn't. And we do have sixty-foot roads, and there is plenty of easements, and we'd be able to offer an easement for sewer lines in the future.
I just don't see an easement drawn on here. That's what I'm...
Yes, well, there will be an easement, and the easement will be at the front side adjacent to the sixty-foot road.
Before you leave the speaker's platform, what size of a, of a house are you intending to build?
We're going to have a minimum of fourteen hundred square foot home, two, two-car garage. They will be allowed outbuildings. A lot of the people that will be looking at this will, you know, are people that have boats, campers, et cetera, motor, uh, motor homes. And they like to keep it sheltered and they can't do it in a regular garage. There's nobody else that's offering this around that I know of to where people could have a little bit of country life, some large outbuildings. Uh, this will all be stick built in place. The house has to go in before any outbuildings go, or at least be under construction. Uh, the covenants are very strict, there's no livestock allowed. Uh, we had, uh, covenants on our first development, which was Equine Ranches. And, uh, they're on file. And basically, we're gonna be following the same covenants with the exception, no livestock. So this will be a very upscale, nice looking thing. The roads will be dedicated to the county and they'll be built to county specs. And, uh, I feel like the extra fifty foot uh, should assure some of the county members that, that, uh, we've tried to cover all the bases. And we will have final approval. Nobody drills a well or puts in a septic system without being approved by the developers or one of our representatives.
Well, and your last comment, Gary, just led me, or segued into the question I was gonna ask. So you're selling the lots to developers and there's gonna be multiple developers? Or is it a contract with one developer to come in and build these fourteen hundred square foot homes?
We are the developer, uh, and we go by Patriot Land and Development Company. The name of this project is going to be Country Acres. And we will be selling, uh, direct to the, the people that will build. But we will use realtors, of course, and which will be good, or be, uh, we'll probably primarily use realtors.
Your covenants also state the quality of the home and so forth, that's, that's to be built by these different builders?
Yes, yes, and all stick built. And, uh, we have a very extensive covenants on Equine Ranches and we're gonna primarily be using them other than they're allowed horses and cattle and we're not, and we're not allowing any of that. I think this would be a very nice looking unit and I think it'll serve a purpose for Garden City that isn't being served now. So I hope that you'll find that, uh, the one point seven five is sufficient. And, and there will definitely be easements to take care of anything that's needed in the future.
Gary, on the roads, um, you said county specs. Now, this, this isn't curb and gutter though.
This is not curb and gutter. It will, uh, be built just like a county road. Uh, they'll be sixty foot wide, uh, total. And, uh, be inspected by the county and, and, uh, maintained. We'll dedicate them to the county when we're done. And there will only be two entrances into this. There, uh, will be an entrance off farmland and an entrance off of M- Mary, so, uh, it, we're keeping the, uh, entrance exits to a minimum. Well, or the quarter mile road that'll come off of farmland will tie into the existing quarter mile road on Equine Ranches. And then, and then, yeah, okay.
Help me understand, are each, each of these fifty-five lots to provide their own water well? I guess I kinda have an issue.
Yes, each will have their own water well, each lot. And, uh, it'll be approximately, most, most water wells are a horse and a half. Some people go with a two horse. And, uh.
You're looking at about five grand in a water well, by experience?
Yeah, we're looking at a water well per lot and a septic system per lot, the aerated septic system. And of course, if it's a three bedroom home, then that septic system will be for a three.
With the septic system issue, it's just the, the water supply kinda bothers me and I, I just don't know if I'm comfortable with that. Commissioner, you could probably speak to that, your subdivision. You, would you rather have individual wells or do you like what your system is?
Well, the, the, the thing that we've run into with our, our water system is the quality, uh, more than the availability. And, uh, I, I don't know what the quality is up in, where this one is versus our quality at Towns, uh, Riverview. But that's, that's what we've run into more than availability.
Yeah, we've run into no problems with our other development, Equine Ranches, which is on the same quarter. The water is tested good. And, uh, the wells that are drilled are usually, they seal off the, the top sources and, uh, use the deeper water, which tends to be a softer water. But it's all tested by the well driller, you know, at the time that he drills well. And it's tested in Dodge City at the lab.
One of, one of the differences, uh, to piggyback onto my response. One of the differences would be with our sole source of water, uh, provider, there's, uh, governance by KDHE, or, or not governance, oversight by KDHE. Where on the individual water wells, I don't know, you know, what the, you know, I, I guess it would be just like your farmhouse water well as far as any, uh, oversight.
I have two quick questions for you. Do any of these covenants require a basement?
Uh, they, uh, do not require a basement, but, uh, just about everybody puts a basement in.
In lieu of a basement, does a covenant require a safe room?
Uh, I'll tell you, the way I feel about basements, I mean, I think that's a really good thing. And, uh, the covenants will require a basement.
And then my final, my final question, would you consider if, if it was deemed to be important to not build a house on one of those lots, but rather build a building that would serve as a daycare center?
Uh, as a what?
As a daycare center. I'm, I'm looking here at fifty-five houses with, with a hundred and fifty kids.
You know, that's a, that's a good idea. It might even be a good business to have it right there in the middle of this thing.
Ponder that, okay. That was, that was my last question. Anybody else before we take action? Lana's back there? I can't see Lana. Lana? Can, can you come up, please? We, we have a question or two for you. Would you mi- mind letting Lana speak?
I'm awesome, how are you?
Hi Lana, how are you?
I'm awesome.
I guess my point is, Lana, you're very active and knowledgeable about these divisions. Your point of view, your take on this. I mean, I like the concept, but.
Yeah, and, and I get it, it's a little bit more challenging than, than we like to think some people are, are up to. But we hear a lot of requests for this type of housing. And folks understand that they're gonna be, they're gonna be responsible for a water well and a septic system. I don't, I don't think that's that out of, out of the realm of possibilities. There's a lot of people looking for a little larger lot size and a little more separation from the community, so. At this point, obviously, we're not gonna say no to just about any housing we can get. But this is a great location. It's, it's near enough that people don't feel that, like they're isolated, they're close enough to shopping and such. Um, I, I think it's a, a great solution. I assume you've talked with the school district? No? We probably need to go ahead and facilitate a discussion with the school district. I think we should definitely do that. And we also can visit with them about the opportunity to, to reserve a spot for childcare. And the network obviously can step in and lease that space if they opt to go that direction. But we can certainly get with them and make sure that we're not leaving anything undone. But the school district is probably the biggest challenge we need to address right away because we do have a lot of additional housing going that direction. We wanna make sure we can accommodate those kids.
What we're being asked to consider today is a plat. We're not considering a developmental agreement, so, uh, there are other, other things to, to occur on down the road if this is approved today, correct?
Yeah, yeah, so today you're actually looking at, at varying from the standard lot size. But again, we have to do what's best for land use. And I think this is a great solution, uh, for, for a, a portion of our population who wants that type of housing.
Okay. Anything else? Entertain a motion.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we approve this, um, plat. Is that what you wanted? There's not a plat. Uh, variance.
It would be a waiver.
A waiver.
Yes. Yeah, they will still have to go through, um, their preliminary plat and their final plat, which will come, the preliminary plat will not come before you, however, the final plat will.
That's your motion, correct?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second? Discussion?
One, one more quick question. Will all the, uh, uh, electrical utilities be above or below ground? Below ground, okay.
Okay. Yes.
Well, go ahead. Let Bill go first and I have a question.
Just wonder if this comes to us for a developers' agreement, if we could look at water usage. And I would think, given what I've seen of ag water usage with a pivot, uh, on at least half of a se- of a section there or circle, uh, it would be less water use to have residential over the ag use, but I would, I would be interested in those numbers. Uh, is there any covenant to try to zero scape or minimize, uh, water use? Are we gonna have everybody with green yards out there? Any thoughts to that? Two, yeah. Okay, thank you, Ken.
Another comment?
Well, mine is to Alicia, um, well, trying to make, be succinct about this. When exceptions are more than not, then they become the rule, is the point of my question. So my question is this, I know we don't necessarily, other than Equine, uh, uh, states, maybe have too many developments that are similar to this or even close to this. But are we getting into a point where this is the only exception that we've had to this particular, uh, rule? Or are we getting into a point where we may have more exceptions than really are the rule?
As far as the subdivision, this is the only one. However, we do have several property owners in the county that have lots where they would like to split them to be smaller than the two acres. That is a pretty common, uh, question that we get. Um, I actually did have somebody contact me last week who wanted to bring a waiver before you at the next meeting to split their lot to be less than two acres.
So my point is this, should we be looking at that and saying acre and a half instead of two acres? Or, or are we, are we okay yet? Cause we're just once in a while making an exception to the rule.
That would be up to you. Um, we can start looking into it and look at the surrounding counties to see what their minimum lot size is and get in contact with KDHE about the lot sizes as well. So if that's something you'd like us to look into, we can do some research and bring it back. Um, just as an informational and let you decide from there.
Mr. Chairman, it's, I mean, I don't have a problem making an exception once in a while, but if we're doing it all the time.
We are, we're setting a precedent.
Right, yeah, so.
But we do have a motion and a second. We need to vote on it. So all those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Those opposed, aye. That carries, I believe, four to one. Thank you, guys. And Alicia, you had something else on the agenda here, do you know? That's it? Henry, bring, uh, whomever and forward, please.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Um, I'm Henry Reed from Calvesta, uh, representing Horse Thief. And this is Becca Wyatt. She is from.
Jetmore, I live in Jetmore.
She's, her family's originally from. Ingles, yeah. The Wyatt and, uh, Lightner family, so you guys probably know them. Um, Josh left in January and Becca has taken over as manager at, at the lake. Um, how, how long have you been there?
Um, I'm going on year eight. I was a seasonal for five and I've been full time this year.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and Josh has taught her all the aspects of, of running the lake, both, both outside and inside, so. She's, I think she's real qualified and, uh, they're doing a good job. They've ran the lake, her and Heather have basically ran the lake since January, so Josh left, so.
Couple of quick questions for you, Henry. The, uh, the one one five percent sales tax that's been in place for years to fund Horse Thief is about to expire.
Yeah, December thirty-first.
And, and so we would, we would like to hear from you, are you in a position financially to continue without, without, uh, that tax and because it's.
Well, it's, um, it, it should last quite a while, you know? It's, uh, when they originally, uh, draw up the plan, the two million dollars in, the two million dollar endowment would, they thought at five percent return, they could sustain the lake. But that's not gonna happen, so.
Five percent's tough to get.
Well, yeah, and, and things have just gone up so much. It's just, it's really tough to keep the bills paid. And what we make through the gate is just a, a small portion of what it costs to, to run the lake, so. But I think, I mean, there's enough money there to, to last probably thirty years, I think. Um, we haven't really got down to, you know, when we get the money, what we're gonna do with it. We haven't got that far yet, but, uh, we're gonna start working on that, so.
Any, um, questions or?
Well, a couple of questions, uh, for Henry and then I'd like to hear from Becca as well. But, uh, from your perspective as a board member and reporting back to us and so forth, I, I, uh, know that there were some legal issues with regard to Josh.
Right.
And it was public knowledge. It was in the, in the, I think Dodge City Globe or somewhere was a news story about that. My question is this, has the board, uh, uh, taken action to help, uh, prevent those kinds of situations in the future that it doesn't find itself in a, in a precarious spot going forward?
Um, what we've done is, um, we've purchased a, what they call a self-pay kiosk, which, um, we were originally gonna go with completely cashless, where you could only use a credit card. Um, but we decided to go ahead and, um, use, use one that does take cash. And it's the same, uh, one of our board members, Steve Seibel, is the, uh, works for Parks, Kansas, uh, Parks and Wildlife. And so we'll be using a, the same, uh, brand of, of kiosk that they use in the other lakes, which it will do end of day. It's got, you know, it's, it's tied in like a, like a regular cred- you can use a regular credit card. And it just keeps, keeps track of all the cash. I think it holds, uh, like four hundred dollars cash in the machine and then it does end of day. It sends it right in. It's, you know, it's got a line that it's, you know, internet line and it, it does end of day and keeps a total of all the cash that's in there and all the, well, all the receipts for the day. And then it just prints out a, it's a ticket that has a, a tape on the back, so you just, when you get your receipt, you stick it on the window of your vehicle and, and you're good to go for the, for the day or the weekend or whatever, so. You have a boat, you know, you just put in there one car, one boat and it just gives you a total. You either put your card in and put cash in, uh, much like, mu- like any retailer, you know? Like any self-pay.
It should go straight to the bank and at the end of the day, it'll print out a report. So after, at the end of every day, we can go print out a report, have our records, plus the bank, have our records.
So my last question to you and then I'll ask a question. So my last question to you and then I'll ask a question to Becca. Uh, so the board be believes that its legal issues are behind it with regard to that? And and the auditors have approved or stepped in and said this is a logical uh way mechanism?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay. And then to Becca, and and you'll need to step to the microphone for those who are online. What are the plans for uh this summer going forward? Uh, the last we heard from Henry, uh, the, uh, what do you call those huts?
Yurts.
The yurts were pretty much done for the time being and so forth, but give us kind of a status report of what the plans are for the lake.
Um, we do have two docks going in. Um, I know the issue with the rock on our shoreline that was caused by erosion, so we have purchased two docks. I'm pretty sure one's going to be here tomorrow. Um, I do have our philanthropic group that is going to help us put those in, so we get those um out as soon as possible because I know people are really worried about it over the summer. Um, like he was talking about our self-pay machine, um, it's going to be here sooner than we thought. Uh, we, we were trying to do the transition, um, like all the other state parks. Why not do what they're doing? Because if they go there, they'll know what to do here. Um, we'll have to, I think we'll have to transition it a little bit where um we may have our self-pay envelopes just to get people in the rhythm to do this, to work this new machine or whatever, but I think we should have it within the next couple of weeks. Um, our volunteer group is going to hold some events this year. Um, they do horseshoe tournaments. They're going to have a big banquet on the Fourth of July. We are still going to have our festival, um, changing it to August this year and not June. Um, so we're just trying to move forward with what we've got and the help that we've got, um, so.
And then your, your staff is how many, how many people are?
Um, I've got two seasonals hired right now. It's me and then Heather in the office and then our camp host. Um, does plays a big part in what we do out there, so.
And then your friends, the volunteer friends?
Yep, and they're always all, all hands on deck if I ever need anything. They're more than willing to help in whenever, however, um, they're a good group to have. So they're going to still be a group this year and uh try to help us out as much as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anything?
Thank you, Becca.
Well, uh, this is more of a comment than a question. Um, uh, since the, our funding runs out at the end of the year, but we, I would encourage you to stay in touch with the area and local visitor bureaus, your surrounding counties. Um, I think it's very important if you want to promote it, that those, you need to have regular contact with them. I mean, monthly, you need to send reports to them or talk to them or do something like that. Uh, you don't, our financial responsibility is the end of this year, so we won't have any control or say over it. Thank you.
Bill?
Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd just like the record to show that uh the Jetmore Republican article entitled Hobbs Receives Diversion, Horse Thief Theft Case was read into the record of this meeting. I will start with the second paragraph, which, which says, in November of twenty twenty, after U.S. Attorney declined to file federal charges showing that Hobbs had nearly a hundred thousand dollars of unaccounted monies deposited into his personal account. He admitted taking cash in the amounts of four to five hundred dollars, uh, but had other unaccounted deposits. The first paragraph says completion has come to this case December twenty twenty. Uh, the attorney's office in Hodgeman County's put Hobbs on diversion for the next twelve months. In the meantime, he's not permitted to hold a position at the reservoir as long as he's on diversion. He's taken a position in Montana and has left the area. Um, and I would just have to say, it came as a shock to me that the first time I heard about this was when this article was forwarded to me by our county clerk. So it, it gives me some pause as to uh the governance and the oversight at the Horse Thief Reservoir. You know, we, we as a board are aware of bonded indebtedness that was done, I know, before Mr. Reed's tenure as our representative, that extended uh the debt beyond what was anticipated by our taxpayers. I felt it should have sunsetted twenty eighteen, not twenty twenty-one. Uh, there was a hundred and twenty thousand dollar uh unbid rock contract or riprap contract that we became aware of by reading minutes, uh, months after it had been done. So uh my point is, uh, we, we will lose some of our supervision uh when this goes off our tax rolls. But I think going forward, given that these are taxpayer dollars at work, uh, you really do need to tighten up the governance. And I, I am in touch with Sean Tasset, who, as you know, is a Ford County Commissioner. And there, he has concerns that uh there's even a, an opening for Mr. Hobbs to return as manager uh after the diversion period. Uh, I would like to know here today if if that's actually planned.
Well, I don't know. I don't think that Josh would come back. He's, I think he's got a better job now than he had here. He's working with the national budget now, so. I mean, and as far as the rock, the rock was bid. We had like four bids or five bids. I mean, we had a bid for the concrete from the swimming pool, which we rejected. It was a cheaper bid, but we wanted a nicer rock than. Yeah, we didn't, we didn't want the, the residual uh rebar and stuff in, in with the rock. So, so the, the, the riprap that we bought was, was needed and we did bid it. We did take a higher bid because we got a higher quality rock.
Thanks for clarifying that. I would say that from the reading the minutes, it was not apparent that it was bid at all. But again, I think you all are going to have your own special district there. Um, and we won't have oversight and and I think it's really important going forward to, to tighten this up because these are taxpayer dollars and and board members are fiscally liable for this uh activity. And going to the uh, the coverage of cost there, um, it's going to be user fees. I mean, I don't see any other, any other way that, I mean, I would not accept anyone coming back to us for money to support this on, on my tenure on the board. I think the taxpayers of Finney County, who are primary users, I get that, have been very generous, uh, but they, they're benefiting. But I think the users uh need to pay the freight out there uh going forward. So I, I realize you have an endowment. Um, I, I, I won't get into how it's invested. You may have restrictions that limit your return, which in the markets we've had the last few years, I, I dare say it could have doubled uh if, if there was flexibility in how you invest. But uh I, I agree on, if you're putting it in a bank, you're not going to get much on it. So um I'm not going to be there on, on the board, but uh hopefully you will because I know you really care about this, this project. But I really think the governance needs to be tightened up out there and uh I hope that the relationship with Pawnee Watershed is good. I've, I've also heard uh in the windows that there, there was, was some rub with the watershed. I mean, they're the, they own the ground, as far as I know, and I would hope, are they, they're on your board as well, right? Don't they have somebody?
Well, the president of our board is, is appointed by the, by Pawnee Watershed, although he does not vote unless there's a tie vote.
Okay. Well, I, I, again, I, I hope that relationship is good, Commissioner Tasset, and and I both have concerns about, about that going forward because it, they own the ground.
Well, they own the ground. We have a ninety-nine year lease with them. Uh, they take care of the dam and the water.
If, if this uh offense by Mr. Hobbs had risen to the level of, you know, felony, uh, would that have violated the agreements of that lease?
I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know either. I'm not a lawyer, but I, I think that, uh, again, the management, and and this maybe falls on Becca's shoulders to manage the resource as well and, and with great transparency. I, I think any government, any agency holding and using taxpayer funds needs to go overboard on transparency. So I, I'd like to see that in the newspaper rather than an article about malfeasance. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'd just like to make a comment. Um. This situation was blown out way out, way out of proportion. Um, Jetmore Republican tends to write everything negative, nothing positive. So I, that's why I'm kind of here, it's just like we, we've tried to do, we've tried to move forward. There was an article printed in April, I think, four months after everything was cleared up, everything brought back up. And it's just, um, I would just say, don't believe everything you read or you hear.
Okay, anything else?
But just, when, when he's talking about the funding and so forth, it makes me think, I know this is not a state park thing, but some comment was made that we try to, well, the kiosks, I think, you know, we're trying to do this like the state parks. But how, are they funded just by user fees, uh, the, the state parks and so forth? Is that a reasonable expectation or they're getting money from the state, correct, or?
I don't, I think the only lake in Kansas is the one up by Lawrence. I think it's, there's, I don't think there's but one lake in Kansas that actually is in the black as far as using attendance money.
Okay.
I mean, all lakes are funded through uh the state.
Yeah, okay.
And that's, it's one of those things. It's um, it's, it's culture and recreation, you know, and.
But you have the, you have the endowment, but that would be one of the big differences between.
Yes.
Horse Thief and some of these other lakes is.
Absolutely.
Funding source going, going forward, I'm talking about, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Let me try to run from Mark just like what the state parks are doing. We're trying to stay in the same route or program or whatever they're doing, so people who are going to these state parks, even though we're not one, we're basically.
And, and that makes a lot of sense, yeah, to, for less confusion and so forth, yeah.
Folks, we, uh, we appreciate your coming in today and please feel free to come back and keep us kind of up to speed.
And Becca, have you met Roxanne right behind you? She's the person you need to visit with.
Okay.
It's nice to hear what's going on out there on a progress report and so, uh, thanks for coming.
All right, thank you.
It looks like on the agenda, it's Linda Lowmeyer, County Councilor.
Medium height people. Um, good morning. I was asked uh at the last commission meeting to do some research with regard to the economic development um request to do a loan for Hunter's Glen Development. Um, and I have done that research. My recommendation or my findings to the board are that I didn't find anything that would preclude that type of a loan. Um, and so I, your vote last week, my understanding of the vote was that you had approved that loan with the understanding that I would do that research. Uh, with regard to that, just, just to fill you in on some of that research, I think because this is a USDA loan, um, there's Lana. A, a USDA grant, is it grant funded?
It's loan.
Loan. Um, USDA, there's, there's actually even a special provision under Chapter Twelve that allows for this type of uh loan for um housing development. And so I think this kind of fits into that niche pretty, pretty squarely. Um, additionally, I did some research just for the board's edification on this. Um, it looked like back in the nineties, the board did do some, some loans and some bonding to some development persons. Nothing of this size um previously, but um as far as the legality of this particular loan, I don't see any problems with it. Um, I spoke to Ms. Duval uh very briefly, actually, this morning. We played phone tag last week. Um, but it sounds like they have the repayment and all of that set, set forth and and set out. So um as far as I can tell, this is legal and and meets with any legal criteria you might have been concerned with.
Okay, so we'll need to take no further action because our action last meeting was contingent upon this getting a blessing and it got the blessing, correct?
I'm going to look to Dory for that answer.
I think we may need something, the, the chair to be authorized to sign any of those.
That's correct.
That's what we, that's what we voted on.
No, last time you approved the loan.
Oh, okay.
Contingent on the legal research.
Thanks for your correction there. I, I stand corrected and I'll entertain a motion to get this all.
Well, and I just wanted to, to report back. I knew Commissioner Pishney had asked specifically about financials and and such. And I have requested those from Mr. Snodgrass. I told him that it was tentatively approved um to following legal research and due diligence on the part of the commission to loan the money. So I haven't gotten that information back from him yet. Um, but as soon as I do, I'll get that with, with Robert and Linda and and we'll figure out how you want to move forward from there as far as doing up loan documents and such. He won't know on the USDA funding until June sometime, so we have a little bit of time to work with.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, nothing else needed there today, correct?
There is. Mr. Chairman, I knew that you're authorized to sign the uh rule of the Hunter's Glen Development pro, loan.
Second.
Motion second, discussion? Not all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
On to the next item. Thank you. Courthouse. Uh, we got a whole crew back there. Who's, who's going to come and speak to us?
Are they speaking before Color Leopold?
Wait a minute, I, I apologize to you. Sean?
Yes.
Let's, let's see your edited version of a, of a insurance proposal, okay?
Yes, I will, uh, I will do my best to make this brief for you this morning. Doug is playing Santa Claus this morning.
Thank you, Doug.
Well, I want to, can you hear me okay?
For the record, put your name into the record.
Yes, Sean Myers with Color Leopold Insurance.
If we can get Doug to go sit down, we'll listen.
I know, right? He's always causing trouble.
All right, go right ahead.
Well, I appreciate you guys having us here today. We wanted to uh come before the commission and give you kind of an update. Uh, you know, it's been a while since we've been in front of you. Uh, as a result of COVID, things slowed down in two thousand and twenty and early twenty-one. Um, but we have an opportunity to come share with you a little bit about what's, uh, what's happened over the last year uh with the insurance and where we're moving forward in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Uh, so I kind of wanted to provide you with a little bit of a stewardship type report, share with you uh that since July one of two thousand and twenty, just to give you an idea of how often we work with the Finney County account, uh, there have been three hundred and twenty-three individual total activities since that particular time. We keep track of every activity, every phone call, every email that comes in from the county. And those uh particular uh activities are just specific to one event. Within that activity, there might be several emails, there might be several phone calls. So the amount of touches could be almost triple that in a given uh year. In that period of time, two hundred and eighteen workdays have occurred. We touch this account one point five times a day. So every day we are working on uh the Finney County account for insurance. Obviously, two thousand and twenty uh provided a unique challenge. Uh, some things were basically put on pause. Um, and we are, are hoping that uh moving forward, we get to reestablish that uh with some, uh, with some specific things that I'll outline here in just a moment. But did want to give you an idea in terms of a premium breakdown over the last several years. Uh, back in two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen was the last year that we were with EMC. At the time, the expiring premium was five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars. The renewal premium that year was expected to be six hundred and fifty thousand with EMC. And at that time, we made the decision to go out and look at Travelers as an additional option uh in lieu of keeping it with EMC. And at the time, uh, we got a very favorable quote back in eighteen nineteen of five hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars, a savings to the county of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand during that period of time. In nineteen twenty uh policy year, the premium remained flat. Five hundred and twelve dollars, uh, five hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars was the annual premium. And then last year, we had an uptick uh in, in pricing just uh due to increased property rates um and some claims. Uh, five hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. So we still haven't even achieved uh the level in which we were at in terms of pricing uh when it was with EMC in two thousand and seventeen. Uh, just to give you an idea of, of what we do on a daily basis, one of the things that we uh work diligently on is closing claims, closing open claims. Making sure that those claims get closed in a timely fashion affects a lot of different things. It affects the loss ratio, it affects the experience modification. And so from two thousand and eighteen, since we've been with Travelers, we have no open claims from two thousand and eighteen. claims from two thousand and eighteen. All claims have been closed. From two thousand and nineteen, uh, I'm happy to report, I got notification this morning that one longtime claim that we had open is now closed, um, and a settlement was reached there, uh, on the work comp injury, and we have a, only one claim open from two thousand and nineteen. In two thousand and twenty, we only have four open claims, and in twenty twenty-one, we have twelve. Now, obviously, uh, we're right in the middle of the first part of the year, so there's gonna be a few more that are open. Uh, with claims, we do a, we do a mid-year claims review, uh, that was done in March, and, uh, key members of the administration participate in those, uh, in those claims reviews, and we get high-level, uh, information direct from the, uh, claims adjuster on each and every open claim. And so we get an idea of where things are at, they get an update as to how long it'll be before it gets closed. Uh, give you an idea, over the life of the policy with Travelers, we've incurred eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand in claims, uh, total paid out is only three hundred and thirty-eight, uh, nine hundred and seventy thousand. So, I mean, you know, it's just a fraction of what the total incurred is because they kinda put reserves on things and, and so forth. So I think we've managed claims very, very well, and I think Travelers has managed claims very, very well, uh, given the circumstances. I wanted to share with you, uh, is, and, and some of you may know, uh, obviously, uh, Dory and Robert are aware of this, that the EPLI might have been an issue, uh, renewing with Travelers. I'm happy to report that I just received an email this morning at nine fifteen, uh, we worked very diligently with Travelers to have that reinstated. Uh, they will, they will be adding the EPLI back in, there is no issue with the EPLI and Travelers, that will be a part of the renewal moving forward, um, there's no issues there. Employment Practices Liability Insurance. Employment Practices Liability Insurance. So that particular line item, um, is back in the policy and we're, we're very excited about having that back in.
Quick question, Sean.
Yes, sir.
Significant raise in the premium for that coverage?
So there isn't gonna be a significant raise in premium, they are gonna take some rate for that, and they are going to look at a different deductible, which we, which we don't know yet, we're still gonna go and, and negotiate that with Travelers. Um, but I can tell you that, uh, for all intents and purposes, what we are aware of related to the renewal, and there's still some information we're working through, um, you know, with Dory on and with, uh, Kelly, specific numbers and things like that. A lot of factors involved in that, right? You know, how many new cars, uh, we had, have, have had over the last year, 'cause it's composite rated, we don't add those on like it did in EMC, we get to do a list at the end of the year and it's audited. So there's a lot of factors, but I can tell you that, uh, Travelers, uh, is, is, um, uh, very comfortable with keeping this renewal very palatable for the county. And, uh, I don't see anything that's going to be, uh, out of line at this time, so.
But the reason that they were even contemplating, uh, taking that item out was because of some of our existing claims, is that a fair statement?
That is correct, that is correct. And, um, you know, we've, I'll, I'll be honest with you, I've been working very hard with Travelers, uh, since that, uh, notification came out to get them to do that, and I've had, uh, probably a dozen phone calls with, uh, underwriters and, uh, some of the high level folks at Travelers to make sure that we got this put back in for Fannie County. It's a big, this is a big deal, okay? Because it allows us to keep retroactive dates, it allows us to, uh, i- it allows us to seamlessly go through this next year, no problem. So I'm very, I'm very happy about that. Uh, one of the things that you guys are aware of, and, 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 uh, you know, Doug can speak to this because, uh, he really has been a, a pivotal part of this for a lot of years, and that is the Safety Committee or what we would call the Loss Control Committee. You know, this committee, um, you know, had to take a pause due to COVID, but we're ready to get started and get, uh, back up and running, uh, so that, uh, the committee can be, uh, reestablished, so that the bylaws can be looked at, and we can add some new members. Obviously, we've had a lot of different change in administration and, and personnel, and I think a fresh look from new people on that, uh, particular committee will be fantastic. It helps to drive a culture that is extremely important to create safety and a reduction in claims. And this isn't just about work comp, it's not just about, um, you know, make, it's obviously about making things safe, but it's also about auto claims, it's also about GL losses, so it, it goes beyond that. Um, and we've got a great resource with, uh, Think HR, this is something that we brought, uh, to, uh, the previous, uh, HR Director, and I know they got signed up for it, um, and I think that Kelly has been using this resource. Uh, there are tremendous amount of resources available in Think, uh, Think HR as it relates to OSHA training, uh, specific forklift training, employment practices liability, liability losses, employee handbooks, those kinda things. So that's, that's something that we're giving to the county at no cost, we bear the cost of this, uh, but this will be, this could be a very pivotal part of what we do with the Loss Control Committee. So what we'd like to do is kind of a four-step process, you know, um, review the bylaws, select new individuals to be a part of the, of the committee. And I would encourage some potential involvement from you guys as commissioners, and, and I don't necessarily feel like it's gotta be a, you know, somebody dedicated to the committee every meeting, but, uh, an, an opportunity to come in and see what the committee does and how it can operate will set the tone for a culture that I think you all are, are wanting to achieve and what Robert is wanting to achieve as administrator, uh, within the county. Um, we'd like to schedule an initial meeting with our Loss Control Expert from Travelers, Sean Eliff, who, who comes out regularly, they, they are now open to travel again, so Travelers is allowing for that, so we can get him out here. Um, starting a review of open claims and identify some training opportunities and how we can get started there, and then selecting a date for our safety fair and beginning to plan for that event. We've done that every two years, that's been a fantastic event. Um, our last one was our first with Travelers, we did not get to do one last year. Um, but our desire out of the Loss Control Committee was to bring in a speaker that could have some, uh, major impact, uh, on the idea of safety and culture. And so I've reached out, or had reached out, uh, to Brad Livingston, I don't know if any of you familiar with Brad, but Brad, uh, lived in Elkhart, Kansas, uh, in the eighties and nineties and worked for Texas Al Paso. Um, he was, uh, supervising a welding job on a gas line, uh, just, uh, south of Elkhart in Oklahoma, when the, uh, when it blew up. And he was right there and he was blown on top of one of the storage tanks, then that caught fire and blew up. Uh, he was burned over ninety percent of his body, third-degree burns. He does a presentation now where it just talks about the impact that that injury had on his, uh, coworkers, on his, on his, uh, employer, on his family. And, um, uh, there's an individual who lives in town that worked with Brad at the time, I've spoken to, uh, to see what his im- impression of the presentation is, and he says it's extremely impactful. So we felt like, uh, the committee at the time felt like if we brought somebody in that could specifically talk about, you know, what it means to take shortcuts and how problematic that can be, uh, what it means to create a, 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 a culture of safety, this will have great impact because it gets employees thinking about somebody other than themselves, other than, oh, it's just this one thing, it won't happen, right? That's what, that's what he went through. So we're, uh, we're excited about bringing him in, I mean, I've, I've talked with, uh, with Brad and, um, you know, he's, his schedule has obviously changed quite a bit, but, uh, we can get him in here, um, and that is, uh, something that, uh, Keller Leopold is going to do at no cost to the county to bring him in. Uh, we've got some other people we'd like for him to speak to as well, so we're gonna bring him in for a couple of days and give him an opportunity to share his, uh, story. So, uh, that's where we're at with what we'd like to see from the Safety Commission, or Safety Committee moving forward, or Loss Control Committee moving forward. The next thing I wanted to bring, uh, to your attention is, uh, cyber liability, uh, multi-factor authentication. This is something that we'd like to, the cyber liability policy for Fannie County does not renew until February. Uh, with that said, we believe there's, um, there's going to be some information that we need to work through, uh, related to multi-factor authentication. Uh, since COVID, more people working from home, off-site working, uh, there has been an increase in claims, uh, that have happened, and as a result of that, ransomware in particular is one of those. Uh, multi-factor authentication is basically the ability for, uh, me to log into my computer and be given a code to my phone, a separate device, where I then, I am able to log into my computer so that it's unique to me, it's unique to the device, and you're using multiple devices to log in, so that reduces the potential risk. Cyber liability carriers are requiring, uh, multi-factor authentication attestation, so they're, they're basically saying, hey, this is something that we've gotta do. Um, our carrier has not come out with specific, uh, information related to that yet, uh, but the expectation is that they probably will, so we'd like to work, uh, with, uh, with your guys' IT department to make sure that we've got everything buttoned up ahead of time, uh, so that the renewal, uh, will be, uh, the way it needs to be. And we have our Director of IT who's been working with some of our small businesses in the area to help them out with that as well, so. Yes? No, you're fine.
And we have a couple members who have memorials, memorial service.
Yep. Well, this is, this is, that was the last item on my list here, so I just wanted to, um, you know, we're, we're, we're excited about, uh, getting the renewal here in the next couple of weeks, uh, once we solidify some information, and we'd be, uh, glad to be in here, uh, last part of June or, or right after the, uh, renewal period to come in and give you a full review, um, but I think we're sitting very, very good for, uh, the renewal this year, so.
It is renewal time.
It is, July one is the renewal date.
All right, questions or comments, anyone?
Just a quick comment, I, I appreciate the effort you guys have gone to, and I know twenty twenty was an abnormal year as far as working with a committee, with the staff and so forth, because that is important to, to have that, uh, throughout the organization, not just with a few people.
Right.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Doug, thank you guys.
Okay, thank you.
Now, it looks like it's court time, Alfredo. Looks like you brought some.
Brought some, I brought my backups.
Which one of them is, uh, Venus, though?
Chris.
Okay. Go right ahead, Alfredo.
Okay, so, uh, we come before you to ask, um, for approval on our fourth, fourth floor renovation project. So what we're, what we're wanting to do is to update the fourth floor, it hasn't been updated since like nineteen ninety-eights, whenever this building was constructed. Um, so carpet, paint, there's a few offices that we would like to, um, take some walls out and add some, add a couple walls, so very minimal con- construction, a lot of it's gonna be cosmetic, to get it up to looking good.
You ready for questions?
I'm ready for questions.
I wanna make a comment, standing at that, where you're standing about a year ago was one chief judge and a court administrator, and the chief judge had this, uh, boy, if we can just do this, it'd just be the neatest thing in the world, and I asked the question, it's in the record, if we approve what you're requesting this year, what's coming next year? And your chief judge said, nothing, that, well, that'll fix us up and we don't need anything else. So my question now to you is if we approve your request today, what's coming next year?
So there is, um, there are projects coming throughout, um, Kelsey will be coming before you guys, kind of with a, like a five-year plan, um, for some other projects that are, you know, that we're like, and, we're wanting to do, but if you guys approve them.
All right, go ahead, Robert.
Commissioners, we met with the courts, uh, a week or two ago and talked about future projects there and putting them, since we restructured our CIP program and Equipment Reserve Program, I think we have a little bit better handle on, um, providing the commission with a list of projects and a prioritization, uh, to achieve those as we move forward, and those, but specifically have to deal with, uh, facility, um, you know, enhancements and repairs and remodeling and so forth. And so, um, as we move forward, I think you'll, uh, you'll see a just a little bit different, um, approach perhaps on, um, on those types of projects, uh, coming to the board.
All right. I don't mean to pick on you.
No, you're okay.
We, we keep getting surprised and, and this offers some hope, maybe that there aren't any big surprises around the corner.
Nope, um, like, like I said, we're, we're sitting down and we went over kind of the broad scope of what we would like to do, um, and prioritize them to what we need to, uh, we would like.
And Alfredo, the request you have before us today is actually in your budget, is it not?
Correct, it is, um. We have about, I think we have roughly ninety-eight thousand left in our budget for that, uh, we had a few things that were left over from Spark that we had to take care of out of that. But this, this, the money's there, we just have to have your approval to.
Okay, questions, comments?
Well, my, mine's a housekeeping question, if I'm looking at this stuff right, that's on the screen right now, it's about thirty-three thousand dollars plus some locks, uh, being replaced, a- am I seeing that correctly?
It comes out to, yes, it comes out to fifty thousand, six hundred and some change for the total project, and that is, um, carpet, some construction, um, gotta replace some ceiling grids, and then, um, lock, uh, electronic door locks. We're, what we're doing is trying to secure that.
Door locks go back several years to a, a building security study.
Correct, correct. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to get the building to secure, uh, be as secure as possible. We're actually trying to get, to move all the judges up to the fourth floor and have that, you know, those doors secured, so they're locked at all times.
Oh, so you, just to rephrase, you're asking us to give you permission to spend fif- what did you say, fifty some?
Fifty and change.
Fifty thousand dollars of the ninety-eight thousand dollars.
Correct.
A couple of questions, uh, the carpet bids are comparable carpet, uh, there was a difference in bid.
Uh, comparable, Rex, is that correct, right, comparable?
Oh, it was cheaper on labor, the other was cheaper on carpet.
So they are comparable.
And the second question, looking at the diagram of the proposed fourth level remodel, the meeting space, is that, uh, where the law library was?
That's where the library is currently now, and that's gonna stay.
Still the law.
Law library.
That, that discussion's been had and it's over with, and not the law library?
Yeah, um, if I can speak to that, I, um, I went to the last meeting with the Law Library Trustees Board, uh, Kelsey and the Law Library had a conversation, and we came to an agreement with regard to keeping the Law Library where it is currently located. The concern from Kelsey as the administrator was her impression or understanding that the Law Library was required to have public access. We are of the opinion that that is not the case, um, that we're, we're going to limit that access down the road to only, um, members of the bar for, for use of that space and maybe for some special designated, but, but not complete public access. And part of that has to do with Kelsey's understanding that so much of, um, what happens in the law happens in, uh, conversations in the judges' chambers with the lawyers, and so her understanding is that she was never going to limit, uh, the lawyer's access to the fourth floor and to the, to those judges, so that's kind of where we came down in conversations about it, so that, I believe at the next meeting, probably the Law Library Trustees will be here asking for a designation of that space as the Fannie County Law Library, um, just to preserve that for, for the record and for the future, but that was the understanding of that conversation and, and where we ended up.
Correct.
All right, thanks.
Well, yeah, these creative interior, uh, so-called bids are, are really estimates as far as I can tell, and who's going to be authorizing, you know, increased payments or overseeing this, uh, so it's not doubled?
All oversee, uh, all increases will have to go through the court administrator and then brought up to you guys, I mean, if, if it's a significant amount, I mean, so, um, and then they would go through Rex also.
Thank you.
Back to the locks, you're talking about securing this floor, um, so it would be a card system, is that what you're viewing?
Same thing like they, we have down in here.
Down here?
Correct.
So if you give cards to all the attorneys in the county?
They're given specific access.
Okay.
They're, right now, the bar does, the bar does have access to our south door, but only, um, that's it.
Now, that, that includes the elevator too.
Yeah, the elevator, yes, correct. So whoever has access, all access is specific for whoever has a card, even for employees. I mean, they're, everybody's specifically.
Anything else? I'd entertain a motion to either approve or disapprove their request. Pardon?
Have you authorized any?
Fifty and change? Is that what you're doing?
Well, if I, if I understand right, it's the locks that are on the screen right now, which is 18,000, and then those other two bids from Creative. Am I correct on that?
Fifty eight.
Correct.
So whatever those totaled to be, 13,450, 18,612, and what was the other one? It was on there for the lock.
Eighteen.
Whatever those totaled to be, Mr. Chairman.
Got a total, Erdois?
I have 50,640, 24.
See if we can. Okay. I'd entertain a motion.
Chairman, I'll move to approve these, the expenditure of 50,640.24 for fourth floor courthouse improvements and locks.
Second?
Motion second, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Good job.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Oppose? Nay.
Oh, sorry, bud. I thought you voted. I apologize. Four to one.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Thanks. Colleen, I saw somewhere, where did she go to?
Did we take any breaks? What are you doing, Mr. Chairman? We just kind of keep rolling here?
Well, yeah, because two of them need to leave here just a little bit.
I was trying to hide from you behind the podium over here.
Right ahead.
Thank you. We're happy to report progress in our overall numbers and provide an update regarding vaccination distribution in Finney County. The data I'm sharing with you today was updated on Friday evening. We'll release a new situation report at the end of the day with updated numbers, so there's going to be a difference in what I'm reporting today. Currently, we have 22 active cases. We have no one currently hospitalized at St. Catherine Hospital and 49 residents have passed away due to the virus. We continue to remain at a community risk level of low for 12 weeks, as well as few to no individuals hospitalized with COVID-19 over the past few weeks. We're grateful for the work our community has done to slow the spread of COVID-19. In the subsequent slides, you'll see those trends for the full year again in hospitalizations, positive cases, as well as the overall trend, and then the cases positivity, the cumulative positive rate. So you can see how it's leveled out pretty, pretty low. Mass Vaccination Clinic has given 16,933 total COVID-19 vaccinations, approximately 8,731 of those are first doses, 8,202 are second, and then that equals that total. The state is currently calculating 39.9% of Kansans have received a vaccine thus far. And then on May 12th, the CDC adopted the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices recommendation that endorses safety and efficacy or effi effectiveness of the Pfizer vaccine for 12 to 15-year-olds. The state of Kansas adopted the recommendation and Finney, Finney County began vaccinating 12 to 15-year-olds on Thursday, May 13th. This recommendation comes on the tail of an ongoing randomized placebo-controlled clinical trial involving 2,260 participants aged 12 to 15. And the participants who received the vaccine, no cases of COVID-19 occurred, rendering the vaccine 100% effective in preventing COVID-19 in the studied population. The FDA determined the Pfizer vaccine has met statutory criteria to amend the EUA, the Emergency Use Authorization, to include 12 to 15-year-olds, and that known and potential benefits of the vaccine in individuals 12 years of age and older outweigh the known and potential risks of COVID-19 in this population. We are currently awaiting more Pfizer supply to be able to continue to offer vaccine to 12 to 15-year-olds. We're currently expecting to see more available next week after receive more supply. We'll be returning to the high school on Friday this week to offer first and second doses to the high school students again. We are beginning the discussions with the school district to identify some opportunities to offer vaccines to the 12 and 13-year-olds in the community. Thank you for the support as we continue to vaccinate residents as quickly as possible. We encourage residents who have not been vaccinated to schedule an appointment or come to the Mass Vaccination Clinic during our walk-in hours to receive a vaccine. Can you go to the, yes, thank you. Times for vaccine appointments and walk-ins are available and will be posted each Friday. Walk-in hours have been reduced as the demand for vaccines has decreased. This will allow us to check our daily numbers sooner and ensure no vaccines are left over at the end of the day. Appointments can be scheduled through one of our communication methods. We have it all posted on our COVID hub. And then we also frequently update our Facebook page and website with the walk-in hours weekly. We have moved all operations from drive-up method outside the Health Department to inside the Health Department as demand for vaccines has decreased. This will ensure our community members can still receive the vaccines they need while also utilizing our staff's time well. Individuals receiving the vaccine will enter the department, the Health Department via the main entrance and check in with the receptionist. We've created this map that outlines the main entrance as well as where we have the parking for the COVID testing currently. We're incredibly grateful for our community and county partners. Thank you so much for the time and continued support. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
A quick question.
Yes, sir.
12-year-olds that you can give a vaccination to.
Yes, sir.
Do you require or does someone require an adult's parent's signature?
Yep. Parent consent must be signed on the form. So at the high school, we did the sign consent by parents, but then in the office, we're requiring an adult present with the 12 to 15-year-old.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Do the vaccines require, do they require any special maintenance or stories now or they've gotten over all that?
Pretty similar requirements as what was previously released, so from the original. The biggest thing is that we have more hours on Moderna, so they can now be drawn up for 12 hours versus six hours. So that helps us with administration. Pfizer, we still have a six-hour period, and Johnson &amp; Johnson, I believe it's 12.
But Pfizer doesn't have to be way below zero anymore?
Right. So you take it off and put it at refrigerator temp and then it's only good for five days at the refrigerator temp. So it's still a schematic that we have to work around and plan for logistically. It, it's also kind of why we have offsites, so we plan some offsites for these with larger number of vaccines, and then if we don't administer what we are expecting, then we do more onsite clinics at the Health Department. Still, Moderna seems to be the highest in demand and then a significant lower with Pfizer and then Moderna. But we push it out as often as we possibly can. The state has been really good about supplying us with whatever we request.
Thank you. I think.
All right.
Before you leave, I see Angie, you're in, we're going to discuss capacities in some buildings, so let's invite Angie forward to do that. Then Larry, I'll promise you a quick break. Does that sound like a deal?
Good morning.
Morning.
So I know you guys are on a time crunch. We're just asking for your support in going into another phase and allowing us to be 100% open outside, and can we go up to 75% for inside capacity to just cut right to the chase? That's, that's where we're at. And we feel like what this will do is it will help everyone in case something was to, to change with, with our current COVID numbers. We, it would still put us in a good, safe place with those, with those numbers. So Colleen and Roxanne and I have met and that's, that's what we're recommending.
And our administrators just itching to offer something here.
Oh, no. No, I was going to mention that they did meet about this and really hash it out. They're trying to take a progressive approach to this and, and hopefully, as long as the numbers stay like they have been over about the last 10 or 11 weeks now, we're moving in the right direction, we feel, in the community.
I think that's what's moving on.
Yeah.
Made a lot of sense to me. Anyone else?
Effective date would be today?
Today.
Today. I mean, it's, it's you guys' preference. It's how your motion's made, I think, is, is how this moves forward, so.
Mr. Chairman, well, I appreciate, you know, being cautious. I'm, I'm one that's ready to open up 100% everywhere. I, I understand what you're saying as far as if something would change and do we back up or leave it where it is? So I, I get that. My, my question, though, with that preamble is when do you feel like you're going to look at it again to see if we can go to 100%? Are we saying in two weeks from now or a month from now or what, what kind of a schedule do we, do we see?
Sure. So, so far, the last several months, we've pretty much followed up about a month in time. So I think what we previously discussed was coming back in a month, but still having another month's worth of data to then say, okay, now we're ready to take that next step down and say, full open. So still taking that graded approach. Sure.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I'm kind of like Commissioner Pishney. I don't know why we're fiddling around with 25%. I think we just need to go 100% open and be done with it.
It just gives you an avenue to.
We can always change it, but, you know, why people don't, yeah, I think you confuse folks when you keep saying, well, we're just partially open here, but we're 100% open outside.
It's going to be really hard to change it from an event organizer standpoint. That is our concern with the Faze approach. I, I, once the toothpaste leaves the, the tube, you can't put it back in. So it's going to be a real challenge from, from the perspective where I'm at, that, that's, that's where we're at. We, we want the perception to be that, that the events that are held at our facility are as safe as they can be. That, that's our, that we, we talked about that a lot in our meeting is, is how do we convey the, the public image, the perception of safety? Just something for you guys to consider.
That's sold?
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm not totally sold either, I, but I do understand the rationale. My question and one of them is to Roxanne is, are we discouraging any ongoing events by having the 75% indoor? Are we, are we able to attract some new events even with these restrictions from a CVB standpoint?
So as far as recruiting new event, ooh, sorry. I'm a little taller than the, so as far as recruiting, that is so loud. Anyways, as far as recruiting new events, no. And discouraging the existing events, Angie's done a very good job in, the three of us, like I said, did meet. This is a, something that we all came together on, thought this was a good recommendation. We've worked with all the event holders and they all know the expectations. It's a whole lot easier as an event holder to plan for worst-case scenario as opposed to being 100% open and having to explain to those folks why we're still being restrictive as opposed to, the county said we're 100% open, but we still want to be on the safe side and, and provide limits. It just gives the event holder that protection.
And Mr. Chairman, one more question, more to Angie, maybe. And this one's asked from my boss at home. Who is monitoring that we're, you know, I don't remember now what the numbers are on the 75% of 300 of 400 or whatever, but is that the event sponsor's responsibility or are we as a county making sure there's no more than 75% in there or who, who is responsible for that? And, and if we get to 76%, who is responsible for saying we're 1% over?
There, there's no enforcement on this. It's a best recommendation. It's the event organizers ultimately. It's up to them because they've signed on the dotted line and they're responsible for their event management. Everyone's welcome. I mean, no one is gonna, that, that's not how we operate at the fairgrounds. Everyone's welcome, so.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Still entertaining a motion.
Chairman, for purpose of discussion, I'll move to open outdoor capacity 100% and maintain and, and raise indoor capacity 75%.
As per the recommendation.
Per expert recommendation.
Motion is a second.
I'll second.
And a second. In the, any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Three to two. Open her up.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Now, Skylar, you need a little bit of time to get set up here. How about, real quick, everybody run and we'll be back here in less than 10 minutes. How about real quick, everybody run and we'll be back here in less than 10 minutes.
Got two lead phone calls. It's going to be crowded.
The garage there, that's the, the space of the garage there that's closest to the EMS living facilities, that would, we wouldn't stack that one, that would be a, there would just be one unit in that column, that way it's a drive-through garage, they drive in, going forward to park and they drive out to leave. Now, we could, for the backup unit there, we could stack that if we want to, usually that'd probably be the supervisor's vehicle if they were there, they might back in and out, smaller vehicle, less, less risk of, of problems backing that unit in, so that's the goal there. So, there's the dining room area, living room area, we have an admin work area that is for, where they write their run reports, all the paperwork that they need to do. We do have a, a handicap accessible bathroom there available right on the front, where the public would come in and out, they would have access to a bathroom there if they needed to. We don't anticipate a great need for a lot of public interaction of them coming in and out of the building, since it's a satellite station. We would still do our main, the main interactions we have with the public such as CPR classes and stuff like that, we would continue to do that in our main station, and especially if we're able to upgrade that station or build a new facility here in the next few years, that's where we would, that's where we would put our focus for that, that'd be a much bigger footprint for a facility. In the event that we would have to do some sort of meeting or something like that, we could, you know, we can share with the fire department there, if there's some reason we were to have some event there, fire department there, the very far left-hand side there, they do have a meeting area, conference area there, that if we were to do, for some reason have some sort of gathering, we could do it there.
Is, is that the only safe room of, of the facility?
So, right now, that is the only safe room, but we are, we talked with the architects about putting a, a second safe room there, it basically should be re-fortifying one of these rooms here, the, the square footage is like about five square feet per person, and that would just be, it'd only be most of the time just two people, maybe three or four, so it doesn't need to be a very big room to constitute a safe room, so we'd be reinforcing one of the rooms in there on the EMS side to provide a safe room due to inclement weather for the EMS staff, so they would not have to traipse across the entire facility to get into a safe room.
Might offer a, a personal view, I, I was skeptical, by a correct term, about whether the EMS concept was really being included in all of these plans, and I must say I was very pleasantly surprised, we went to a meeting, the, the architect and assistant offered a meeting at city hall and had all kinds of firefighters at, from the entry level through the supervisory level, as well as EMS personnel there seeking input on, on day-by-day things that are gonna be important to people who have to live in those stations, and I came away with a, with a feeling of, hey, that's, that's pretty inclusive, look at what the architect glass has drawn here, and he had a couple variants, one of them was sixty-five-hundred square feet, one sixty-nine-hundred, and of course they're adjusting for the budget and so on, but, but I was, I'm, I'm just gonna leave it that I was impressed that, that you're being included and, and somebody's listening to you, so.
Yeah, I think this, this, this plan you're looking at here is the sixty-nine-hundred square feet, for the EMS side of things.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Couple of questions, Skylar, one, did they say this is the square footage that we're gonna allocate to EMS, and then it was up to you to decide how to use that square footage, or how did this?
No, they, these are plans they came, we just kind of expressed our generalized needs for it, and this is what they came up with.
Okay, and then I'm having difficulty, cause I don't have my whole thing up now, but, this, the top of this, is that to the north, or what?
Uh, there is another.
Which way is that lane?
So, here is, uh, this is.
So, yours is, yours is at the north end, yeah, that's what I, that's what I was looking for, but I, I shut down my computer, so.
Oh, yeah, so that's, that's the current layout there.
Right, because I remembered the entrance to Jenny Barker and to Showman, and so you're closer to the Jenny Barker one.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
You have the option of going around if.
Oh, I understand that, but I mean, I just was trying to get a lay of the land.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Sure.
Wayne?
Correct, so that is basically, so if you look to that area just to the left of the EMS garage, that, the fitness room, storage area, that is the second floor above that, like where that turnout gear, tool shop, decon area, it's right above that, so then we would also have access to the fitness room as well.
Is there open access to the departments, or is that?
Uh, we're still working, there, there's, we're still kinda hashing those out, I think there're gonna be some, I mean, we have to be respectful of their, and, you know, of each other's respective parts of the building, but yeah, there will be some, right now there's, the idea is to have open access between there with, provided it's not abused in any, any way, shape, or form, but there is some security issues that we do have to have, just making sure that we don't have wanderers that come in and out of the building, and stuff like that.
What was profitable about their meeting, I mean, you bring up something, Wayne, that is a key point, in the original drawings, there was a coffee bar for the firefighters. The firefighters said, you know, we don't, we don't really use a coffee bar, we like the coffee pot and the kitchen table, because we get back from a scene and sit down with, as a group, and have a discussion about it, in the formal sense, that's called a debriefing, but that's, in plain firefighter sense, that's having a cup of coffee.
Yeah.
And, and that's, I think what Skylar's talking about, there's gonna be some times when, when you're gonna need to respect, some, where they need to be by themselves, and other times they're all together as a big, boyish family, so.
Right, so it's like, if there's a reason for us to be together, then let's be together, but we don't need to be wandering in and out of each other's.
Same with Skylar's people, they'll need to get together and huddle mouths once in a while, too, so, go ahead, Bill.
Are any of your personnel involved with the hazmat responses, I mean, will you use the decontamination portion of this facility?
Uh, so, no, we're not involved directly with haz, if it's, if you're talking about chemical exposure, no, we're not directly involved with that, is, at least, that hazmat scene is done by the fire department. The decon area there is also for biological, that's where we're looking at, where we need to clean our equipment for biological problems, like if we have, you know, sometimes things get messy and bloody and dirty, and we need to be able to clean those in an area that is not where we're living, so using a washer machine that's dedicated just for biological substances, rather than the same washing machine that would be used to clean our linens or something.
Is there, are there sterilizer in there then, as well?
Uh, that, they have the plants for an extract, they have the extractors there, but there's not, we haven't talked about the specific of a actual sterilizer there for that, other than a lot of the things we use is just chemical sterilization with solid chemical cleaning products.
Thank you.
Sterilizers.
I guess my question would be more towards Dave or Robert, now, the sales taxes that's on is gonna cover the expense of this thing?
Yes, that's our understanding, they're focusing on the construction of the facility with whatever's left over to help offset some of the operating costs, and I can't recall how many years, whether it's the first year of operating costs, they are in the process, I believe, they being the city, has requested to begin hiring firefighter staff to.
Or half, half of a team.
Correct.
In next year.
So, when, when are they proposing construction of this?
Twenty-four.
That was the last number I heard, was twenty-four.
Twenty-four?
Mm-hmm. And I don't have to hire staff.
Yeah.
Anything else, guys? Thank you, sir, for your fine report, and, a couple, all right, guys, I apologize, but whoever's coming up first, let's come on up and. Your, uh, the floor is yours.
Hi, I'm Harvey Felsky with K-Camp, wanted to talk to you about what K-Camp is and how we're different from insurance, K-Camp, you know, if you, I think it'll be up on the, on the, on your computers, but it's also in the, in the packet we, we gave you, if you turn to page two, K-Camp is a pool, basically made up of counties and a few cities, City of Jettmore is a member, that we, we pool our resources to manage risk, which allows us not to have to buy insurance from insurance companies at low levels, we buy them at the high levels, and that is a cost-effective way of managing risk. Why do, why do pools form? Well, typically, if you, if you look at page three, there was an insurance crisis, but page four is probably a, a better way to look at it, pools form to share cost, to be a little more self-determined, I heard earlier today Keller Leopold's talking about, well, travelers may not offer the EPLI, they've decided they will, you know, as a pool, we decide, you decide what coverages you're gonna, you're going to offer all the members of the pool, and it's a little more self-determined. Control claims and litigation management, we have a, we have claims adjusters in our K-Camp office that will help you adjust claims, reap benefits of group purchase, both in terms of attorneys and risk management services that, that the, the pool can purchase for the members, as opposed to what I heard Keller Leopold say, was that travelers had some loss control people, and that they, they would send some out, but, you know, travelers is going to try to manage that cost themselves, whereas the pool, again, made up of county members, you guys decide how much money you wanna spend on those risk management services. And I keep coming back to you guys, and, and I wanna talk about the, how the pool is managed. So if you wanna go to page six, it was formed in ninety-one, there's seventy-one counties, seventy-one of the hundred and five counties in the state are members right now, and, and if you go to page seven, there's a map, and the dark, the dark counties are the ones that are members right now, and if you look at Finney County, every, every county around you is a member right now, and.
Could, could we interrupt you while you're presenting this?
Absolutely.
Quick question, I, you know, I'm looking at your map, but it appears to me, just from casual observation, that the large population counties aren't members.
They're not really in the wheelhouse of, of a pool, you know, the, the large counties typically can afford to self-insure at high enough levels that, that they don't, they don't need to use a, a pooling mechanism, whereas, what, right now, the pool retains the first two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of every property loss, and half a million dollars of every liability loss. I don't know if Finney County could afford to retain that exposure, Sedgwick can, Johnson can, Wyandotte can, but, but Finney and, and most of the counties that are in the pool can't afford that, but if you, if you join the pool, now you can, now, now, the pool is retaining that exposure, and, and we don't have to worry about insurance companies telling us at the lower levels what, what we're gonna do, so, you know, that's kind of, you're right, the, the larger counties aren't in there.
Yeah, I'm pretty, I'm really familiar with these pools, because we set up one years ago through KLA for our feedlot folks.
Okay.
And it's been very successful, and it's a, it's a pool.
Yeah.
And we rebate, according to your accident history, how much money was rebated to you on your payments every year, and it's, it's been very good, I don't, do you do this same type, type of thing with this pool?
We have offered dividends to the pool members, typically what we've been trying to do is, is build our capital position so that we can retain higher and higher retentions, because we have to buy insurance, too, and K-Camp buys at the higher attachment points, we buy from another pool, County Reinsurance Limited, and they provide coverage up to three million dollars for losses of property and liability, but then they have to buy reinsurance above that, so, you know, at the end of the day, we can't afford to retain the entire exposure, but what we'd like to be able to do is just grow that capital so that we can retain more and more exposure, keep your costs low at, at the, at, at retention level, and then buy insurance at higher levels where it becomes less and less significance to the overall program.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so I, I'm gonna skip around here, cause I know you guys, this has been a long morning for you guys, and, and I don't wanna make it any longer, coverage lines, K-Camp provides general liability, page nine, general liability, auto liability, law enforcement liability, public officials errors and omissions, employee benefits liability, and our errors and omissions includes employment practices liability, professional liability for nurses and EMTs, I should've, I'm late to the, led, late to the game as usual, cyber liability, property, equipment breakdown, that would be boiler and machinery type coverages, crime insurity. Our, our coverages are tailored to counties, as opposed to an insurance company that ensures contractors, feedlots, Main Street businesses, hospitals, you know, we insure counties, that's what we do. And we are controlled, or we are managed by a, a board of directors made up of, of our member counties, and if you go to page thirteen, I just kinda wanted to go through real quick, the Board of Trustees, David Lamb is the president of the board, and he's a Lynn County clerk, we can skip around here, John Smith is, is in Stanton County, Randy Braddock is in Hamilton County, and then Sarah Rains is a Hodgman County clerk, so the southwest part of the state is pretty well represented on the board, and, and everything that we do, they approve, so, in terms of coverages that we offer, what we do in pricing, how we invest the money of, of the member counties when they, when they make their member contribution to the pool, all of that is looked at by the board, by you guys, so, I just, I think that's, you know, in terms of how we are different from insurance companies, I, I think I, you know, I kinda explained it, it's, insurance companies, them, pool is us. We've got some handouts in terms of risk management services that we provide, probably the, 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 what we think is probably the most valuable right now is the L-L-R-M-I, legal liability, risk management, it's, it's specific to law enforcement and, and jail operations, and, and with the things that have been happening in the news, the sheriff's job's gotten a lot harder, and he's got a, he's got a, a real tough job in terms of avoiding liability for actions of his, of his employees, and, and this is a really valuable tool, we subsidize most of the expense, member sheriff, the sheriff would have to pay twelve dollars per, per law enforcement personnel to, a year, to take advantage of this program, it's an online program with model policies and procedures, we think it's just, it's state-of-the-art, so, we're pretty proud of that, and then, I know, Le, Keller Leopold talked about Think, Think HR, and, and we've got Think HR, too, we've got an online, and we've got a, a, a council that is available by phone whenever you need it, so, in terms of products and services, I think our products and services are, are better tailored to a county than, than our competition, in terms of pricing, I think because, at the end of the day, you know, this is your money, we're gonna manage it a little bit better than, than for you, than travelers, their job is to maximize money for their shareholders, so.
I have a couple of quick questions for you, I don't know how long you've been with K-Camp, but I'm assuming you have a, a little experience there, has there ever been a time in your tenure that, that they run out of funds, so to speak, where they had to do a special assessment?
No, no, we, actually, we were formed in ninety-one, and we've never made a se, a special assessment, and one of the things that the board does is, they take a very conservative approach in terms of capitalization, and if you look, I think there's, there are some, let me see if I can find it, yeah, if you go to page nineteen, there are some key ratios that, that the insurance department takes a look at, in terms of what do you, what, how should a pool be capitalized, net contributions to assets, that, that determines how leveraged you are, so, our capitalization is, we collect about a little under ten million dollars a year from our members to, to pay for claims every year, but we have sixteen million dollars in capitalization above and beyond that to pay for claims if we have a bad year, so, we're, we're very strong in capitalizing, and, and, and going back to that sixteen million dollars, we have reinsurance, so a single event isn't gonna take that sixteen million dollars, we're capped at two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a claim, so, you, you're talking, you gotta have sixty-four additional two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar events before that capitalization runs out, and, and, and that's above and beyond what we expect to have in losses, which is what we collect from the members every year, reserves to, excuse me, reserves to net assets, reserves are for open claims, the baseline is less than three-to-one, we're at point four-five to one, net assets to self-insured retention, the baseline should be greater than ten-to-one, we're three and a half times that, so, financially, we are solid, really solid, and the board, the current board and, and the board that has served for the last thirty years should be commended for what they've done in terms of making sure that you don't have to be assessed, and you won't have to be assessed.
Being a little bit familiar with pools, my, my perception is that the little guy in the pool has the best coverage, and your smallest county has your best, most economical coverage, and the biggest county is the most at risk, and Larry brought up the point, you don't have many big counties, but isn't that in my statement, you may not agree with it, but.
Um.
There is a bigger risk, the bigger you are.
You know, it, it all goes back to the limits that you purchase, what we do from a property standpoint is we provide a blanket limit for, for our members, and it's based on what you report, so you're covered for whatever property that you report to us, plus twenty percent, plus, we have additional coverage extensions that provide up to two-and-a-half million dollars for newly acquired locations, for miscellaneous un, unreported locations, and things like that, I guess it's possible, I mean, you know, a, a small county is not gonna build a five-million-dollar building and fail to report it, a, a larger county could, the, the small county might build a two-million-dollar building, so they got the coverage for that newly acquired location, or newly built locu, location, whereas the large county, if you're gonna build a five-million-dollar location, then you only got, you only have two and a half, okay, that's possible, but then if you report it, you've got full, you've got full blanket for the limit, and, and things like that, the other thing is, from, from a liability standpoint, lawyers like to look for deep pockets.
Let me clear the air, we've got the expert in the room, he's sitting right over there, you've worked, Robert, with both this company, or with this concept, with, with pool coverage, and with individual insurance coverage, tell us real, real quick, what the big advantage is to the pool coverage?
Um, with, with the pool coverage, the specialization for county operations and so forth, I see that as, we saw that as a big advantage in, in working with that, your comment about the value between large and small counties, might be, might be more of a perception, all the counties have the same level of coverage, but, but the question may be, could the smaller county afford that outside of the pool, and that's a que, that's a good question, mostly because of the, the area in which they, they are at, their location, their ability to obtain that type of coverage at a, at a reasonable rate, and that's what the pool brought together, in the circumstance that, that I'm familiar with, we saw some escalating costs on a, on a private level with private insurance, and plus, we were consistent in bidding ours out every five years, and we, go ahead.
I don't mean to interrupt, but we have an agreement with a company, if you will, to look at our health insurance, and to guide us with the most reasonable health insurance that we can, and afford to buy. We don't have a company guiding us between travelers and, and K-Camp here, so I, I'm looking for a little in-between, there's, there's a difference, one of them has a dangerous one area and one somewhere else, overall, what, you know, how do we sum this up?
Well, let me sum it up for you, the pool's got a lot of advi, no, I, I guess you, that's not the most objective opinion, but, no, yeah, you know, travelers ha, they do have more assets, but I, I go back to, you gave a better answer than I did, you know, what the pool gives the smaller members is a, a full complement of coverages that, that they may or may not be able to afford on their own, and, and so everybody's getting that, now, yeah, it's not, it's not as valuable to a large member, but in terms of, of coverage and, and, and what you're getting, the large member isn't, you know, they're, they're not getting left behind in the deal, the larger member isn't.
We put a lot on your plate today, so all, all defer to that.
I have, is this a one-way street for counties entering the pool, or does some exit and have, some exited and come back, or what's your experience?
Yes, some have left, most of them stay, though, I mean, we, our retention, we've got seventy members, we lost one last year, we didn't lose any the year before, we didn't lose any the year before that, we've had a couple of members come and go, but by and large, I think most of the members are really happy that they make that decision, and they just stay.
And is the, you said there may be a dividend, is there other return locally, you know, local business obviously sponsors sports teams and does things that are a little, you know, not so tangible sometimes?
Yeah, that, we, there are things that we give back to the, to the county, to the member itself, in terms of, there are, I think that's in the, in the pages, well, they quit number, twenty-one and twenty-two, on, on page twenty-two, there's tuition reimbursements for the county members, there's risk avoidance grants, there's risk management awards and loss ratio awards, but in terms of K-Camp sponsoring a ball team or doing something like that, no, we don't do that, you know, though, one of the things you have to look at on that is that the money that you spent, eighty-five or ninety percent of that goes to travelers, they're not, they're not local, they're in, they're in New York City, you know, a hundred percent of the money that, well, no, not a hundred percent, because we have to buy reinsurance, too, but a significant share of, of the money that, that you contribute to the pool is going, is going to stay in Kansas.
Anything else, guys? Well, appreciate your presentation and.
Now, it's my understanding that you're not ready to, to do, to look at.
We need some in-depth discussion here before we make a final decision.
Okay, I, I was gonna say, we, we, in, in terms of our quote process, it's a fairly simple process, we need loss runs from the. We need loss runs from the prior insurance companies, uh, schedules. And typically, if you want to just send us copies of the current policies, the vehicles and the property locations will be on those schedules. And then we have a, a K Camp questionnaire that's, I don't know, seven or eight pages. Uh, if you can get, get that to us, we can probably turn you a quote around and get you something. Uh, I think you have, what, the meetings on the first and third Mondays of the month? So we could probably get you a, a proposal by the third Monday of, of June if, if you, if you still want to move forward with this. If not, that's fine, we'll, uh, we appreciate you letting us present to you.
Okay, I might, uh, there's, there's an advantage to being last.
Hey, I'm used to that. Okay, I'll try to make this less painful than Harvey did. No, I'm kidding. Um, I was, just a little bit about myself real quick. I was independent adjuster, so I worked for EMC and I worked for Travelers, I worked for Saint Paul. Did that for five years. I typically handled some of the heavier, uh, claims. And so I went to K Camp, I was with K Camp for actually fifteen years. So I have twenty-two years in the business. Uh, so I've kind of seen both the sides, um, for what that's worth. I don't really be, want to be real redundant here, uh, but, um, K Work, like K Camp, um, self, a worker's comp, self-funded pool. Um, K Camp started in ninety-one, we started in ninety-two, formed under, in our local agreement. Um, and we're dedicated exclusively to counties. Um, we are county-owned, um, just like K Camp. And, uh, our administrator is Jim Parrish, uh, Dorothy Byrd is the deputy. And, uh, we're county-operated also. One thing about, um, we're in Kansas, we only insure Kansas entities, we have seventy-seven counties right now. And like K Camp again, I hate to revert myself all the time, but we have board members also. We have seven of them in the area. So if you turn to the next page, it shows the, uh, um, the map. All the counties in pink are, we insure. And all the ones in purple, we have a, um, a, um, board member. And we try, like we have one in Stanton, um, and we try to kind of group them all over the state. So there's representation, um, over, um, throughout the state. And again, like Harvey was saying, you know, um, with these other companies, you know, nine to thirteen percent is going to go to the agent. Des Moines, Iowa is where the rest of the money's going to go, if it's EMC or New York, if it is Travelers. Um, and so, um, like I said, the money stays here. Now, we have to buy reinsurance too. We have a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar retention, million dollars is a statute, okay? That we have to carry. Now, we also, we buy nine to thirteen percent, does go out of state, it goes to Saint Louis, Missouri. And that's where we buy an aggregate of three million, just in case that would go over that within a one-year period. Uh, if you turn to the next, um, page, you can see the members. And like Harvey said, uh, it seems like, uh, it seems like when they, when the, when the members come on, they, they, they seem to stay. And the biggest thing that I've heard, working with counties, is that sheriff, he goes, Jess, I pick up the phone and I talk to you. I don't talk to anybody else. I mean, I talk to you, I don't have to explain myself six times. And in a county setting, um, they don't have the time, they don't want to mess with this stuff. Now, and it's, and it's, and that's one thing nice about K Camp, K Work, you pick up the phone, you're probably going to get the person you need to talk to. Um, one sheriff, or not one sheriff, one county minister, I spoke to one time, he goes, you know, he goes, Jess, I just got to get a number and get in line anymore, I just don't care for that. Um, there's just a lot to be said, I think, about picking up the phone and getting that certain person and us being local in Kansas. Of course, um, trustees is on the next page, you can see, um, where they're, you know, uh, located at, out in the counties. Um, our committees, we have an investment committee, audit committee, personnel committee. And, uh, we're about loss prevention. And so as far as the work comp, and this is one thing that I think that we do that, um, really shines from a lot of other work comp carriers. As far as loss prevention, of course, me, I'm a loss prevention specialist and marketing director. And then we have a loss prevention manager. Um, and also Ben is our loss prevention, um, person. We're all OSHA certified, we come out four times a year, we come out quarterly to do inspections, okay? We're not out there to pick on anybody. Uh, we're out there to be in the county, to show you we're there. And like, we may find certain things, um, like, for instance, fire extinguishers that aren't checked off on monthly. Uh, chainsaws that don't have a sheath. You might see a, uh, a plug-in, an outlet that's not a GFCI, that's within six feet of a water source, okay? And what we do is we'll take a picture of it, there, we have a comment that we click on. And, uh, we were, we, we generate that report and we send it to the county clerk and just ask for these things to be corrected. We also teach defensive driving, and in fact, I think we've put over a hundred people through. Uh, we have a, we've just, we're, there's been no charge. Uh, we've done this for, uh, Fannie County. And I think there's over a hundred people already that have been through our defensive driving class. We will teach defensive driving, uh, PIT, which is per, uh, power industrial truck, flagger training. We, there's probably seven or eight different, uh, classes that we have online. And what's so cool about that is like, okay, I come out and teach the sheriff's department or I teach road and bridge defensive driving. Well, what if three or four guys can't be there? What if you hire three new guys? Well, they can just get online, take the test and, uh, get, gets certified. So during COVID, we've really revamped our online stuff to where we could make it better. I love defensive driving, one of my favorite things. I kind of get off on a pitch about this, but that's something that your employees can take home with you. That's not something, well, I learned it, I, I had, had to take it because of work. And I, I mean, you can't measure prevention, I wish you could. But you know, like right now, they're starting to say, instead of following two seconds behind, three seconds behind. If it's raining, four seconds behind. Like when it was raining like crazy when I was coming down here yesterday, I was four or five seconds behind. And you know, you, like I said, you can't measure prevention, but you know, if you think that way and if, if that would, uh, keep you from being in an accident, it's, it's great. Uh, as far as our safety inspections, we also do our safety training. Uh, we'll come down and set up, uh, safety meetings for you. We'll sit down with you and, uh, set up a safety meeting for you. We have JJ Keller, that's our online training. It's a little bit different from one and, uh, the use is, is, has been crazy. I mean, there's just people really taking advantage of, there's over like a hundred and twenty-five courses, something like that. Um, and I don't think they're that painful, from what I've heard. Uh, it doesn't take too long to really get, get through them. As far as safety training, like I said, go real quick here, Skidsteer, Sivo, Video Online, JJ. Monthly meetings of all trustees, they go over everything, all financial transactions reported, checks over five thousand are co-signed. We do a claim review, a loss review. Quarterly finance reports go to our members, quarterly claims reports to membership. Now, we have, as far as accountability, like I said, a little bit about reinsurance, Safety National is our reinsurance. That we have the, Harvey said, that K Camp has CRL. Um, and TriStar is our TPA, which is our third-party administrator. Um, they've been with us for as long as I can remember. Uh, and just, um, you can get another thing too, if you're in a situation where you don't really have time to mess with this, you pick up the phone, you call pretty much one person, and that one person is the one you're going to deal with. And I don't really want to go over TriStar's best operations, policies. Go to, uh, the next page, you can see our charter members. Um, and then the twenty-five-year members and the fifteen-year members, and then also twenty-year members that we have.
When you're talking about your members, I, I noticed, you know, comparing the maps, that some counties are either probably K Camp members, but then they're not K Works members.
Yeah, well, that might, that's get a little bit complicated. Uh, it's hard for, or, a lot of counties go with K Work first. They really do, they go with K Work first and in a couple of years, they usually always end up with K Camp. Not very many people was going to write standalone work comp insurance in this, in the state of Kansas. Now, they're going to say, hey, we'll write property and auto and liability, but we're not going to write just work comp. So what usually happens is that they go with K Work for, you know, a year or two and then it seems like they always merge on over, um, to, uh, K Camp. So, and, uh, K Work works for you. You have any questions for me, if I could help you out in any way? Like I said, I think it's a wonderful program, I've worked for both companies. And I just, in fact, when I started looking at coverages after working for EMC and, uh, and, you know, working for, uh, Saint Paul and some of the bigger guys, I'm like, are you kidding me? They're going to cover this, they're, they're going to cover trees for drought, no way. Yeah, they will, you know? So there's just, there's a lot of benefits of being with the pool and, uh, no more.
Appreciate your.
Thank you.
Time and, and Robert has your phone number.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure we're going to have some pretty in-depth discussions going on.
There's one other thing I did want to mention that just escaped me. Uh, we do offer some grant programs. Um, two years ago, we had a Striker grant program where we gave, uh, about forty-five, fifty thousand dollars to the ambulance people to buy new equipment, because that stuff is just so expensive. Uh, we have a jail scholarship out right now to where we're sending, we, we, we spend half, two hundred and fifty dollars to send them to the, um, the jail training academy. It's a five, it's a five-day course, meals, room, wards included. And if they go, all they do is send a certificate to us and we pay them back. We figured that would be a good way to, uh, maybe build some confidence to the people that are our jailers and it's kind of hard to keep them on staff, so, okay?
Thank you very.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Did you come in for, uh?
I was listening to this presentation.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, I just wanted to come in and say how much I, I support the proposal for K Camp. Cause I know our association supports it very highly.
I have a quick question for, which defensive driving course do you teach?
Okay, well.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Mine is through the National Safety Council, um, each, okay?
The owner's DDC eight.
I get, well, I'm on ten, DDC ten. I was teaching four and now eight's, eight's out and now ten's the new one.
Be yourself, Dave.
I started teaching defensive driving, National Safety Council in nineteen sixty-four. I don't know how old you were then, but I taught that for the next thirty-four.
Sixty-three. No, uh, no, but, uh, yeah, uh, and each of us kind of do a little bit, we all follow the National Safety Council guidelines, but we each try to do it a little bit different. And the reason why I try to do it different is because you don't want to hear the same person every, because that's good for two years. You don't want to hear the same people, people all the time. And so, and so it's just kind of nice to, well, Jess has done it twice, but let's get a hold of K Camp or, you know? But we have three that actually teach at, at.
All right, thank you.
You bet.
Okay, report time. Pardon? Charter resolution.
It's what we wanted to comparison last week, or last meeting.
And we got the comparisons from our county administrator. So we took tentative action, did we not?
We took no action, we tabled it.
So we need to act.
At least consider, at least consider. Once again, the difference really is, uh.
One whereas, um.
It allows for latitude to.
I don't, I don't have it in front of me, so I can't.
Yeah. It allows for the latitude to, uh, adjust, uh, responsibilities between, um, county division of, uh, engineering and the division of, of courts. And that's really about that.
What was the resolution number and I'll make a motion for that. Twenty-one. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a move, uh, motion that we approve that resolution.
The, the new one.
Second. The one that Dory just read off.
I'll second on the charter resolution oh-one, twenty, twenty-one.
Motion and a second has been reached, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? That passes. Now it is time for county administrator.
Actually, you have an executive session.
Your agenda, sir.
What am, what am I missing?
Executive session.
We have an executive session. I, I was trying to forget that.
You want to get out of here?
Well, Bill's, I'm trying to get it so. Okay, so if you need to go, Bill, I appreciate you sticking around. That was my hurry here, was trying to, trying to help him out. So we need, how much time and who do we need involved?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move, we move into executive session for fifteen minutes with, uh, county administrator, council.
Second?
Second.
And in favor, aye.
Aye.
Way we go, be back in fifteen minutes. Just so you know, my little brother's stuck on the pavement with.
Greetings.
Administrator report.
Okay, very good. Well, first I want to introduce you to our new finance coordinator, Jenny Newberry. And I'll let her speak to you a little bit about her, where she hails from and so forth. So.
Come up to the podium.
No pressure. No pressure, Jenny.
I am originally from Garden City. I currently live in Scott City till my youngest graduates from high school next year. I have worked for the Western Kansas Child Advocacy Center and Mosaic here in Garden City for the last four and a half years. And went back to school after she was born, got my bachelor's degree in accounting and in finance, and I'm CPA. What else?
Owned your, were partnership with them own?
Yes, we, another CPA and I shared an accounting firm for about five years. And I worked prior to that for Devon McMillan, who had the accounting firm there in Dayton for five years. So I worked as a CPA for about 10 years. Decided that was not my cup of tea.
Very well acquainted in Scott County?
Um, well, with people who have kids.
I'd like to create a rumor that we're about to absorb Scott County, Fannie County's going to take over. We appreciate you.
Putting a good word in. Thank you.
Good to have you. And so we'll probably get a chance to get better acquainted as time goes along.
Yes.
Thanks, Jenny.
Thank you.
Sorry to surprise you with this. I've been known to go off, I've been known to go off script quite a bit. Update on the connectivity grant. We've provided State of Kansas with the, all the information they've requested pending their final closeout review. Once they do their closeout review, then we'll have a phone call with them to follow up and then hopefully finally receive our nine hundred and twenty. Yep, nine eleven six thirty, nine hundred eleven thousand, six hundred thirty.
What amount again?
Nine hundred eleven dollars, or nine hundred eleven thousand six thirty.
That was on the.
Contractor, you have.
No, no, it's, it's bought in faith order, and so the fiber's in the ground. This week we'll go ahead and submit our information onto the portal for the Recovery Act funds and hopefully begin the process of getting the first half in of that recovery money. Once again, I believe we were in line for about seven point one million, if I remember correctly. And, and so we would receive approximately three point five million dollars of that.
Is there any guidance on what we're allowed to use that for yet?
There is some guidance out already on that, so we're looking at, you know, how, how we can best utilize that. That's the first question we're asking, so there might be an opportunity for us to do that.
Dory, do you have any Scott state? Well, I, my knife was too sharp.
You broke it, didn't you? Okay.
Before you, you received the information or laid a stab at the handouts for you, for the sales tax referendum question coming up. And would like to get some feedback from you. This was a evolving document with the latest being over the weekend. I know that Dory Train and myself have been working on it, trying to make sure that we cover what we hope will convey the best information for the voters to make an informed decision. Think, once again, there's a lot of good information in here, not just, well, really covering the history of that, that particular sales tax, which began back in ninety-five, up to present day. And, and then the uses and the accomplishments in the past and what we'll be focusing on here in the future, if passed. Emphasizing it's, it's not a sales tax increase, it's a request for a continuation of one. We tried to indicate on that right hold, on the first, on the first one in, indicate what that quarter percent looks like to the voters. We did work with City of Garden City and City of Holcomb on this. And once we get things finalized, I know that Robin would like a representative from the county to speak with the city commission on, on that sales tax. Yep. So. Additionally, I know that Dr. Clifford has spoke with the chamber. They'll be sponsoring a breakfast so we can, I believe in June perhaps, to begin getting the word out. I know that Commissioner Dave Jones as well has been setting up some scheduled times to hopefully begin the educational process. And I have been approached a couple, by a couple individuals that are on the chamber to meet with their organizations, to speak with them. And so we'll, we'll begin the process of getting that information, setting up that calendar and so forth. Really do want to get some feedback from the commission so we can finalize this and, and begin that educational process.
Question. With the advent of the new passage of legislation on spending caps from the state, you know, I don't, guess I haven't followed it close enough. But if we raise our budget, we have to take that, I don't understand exactly where the
It's, it's, it is a property.
Level required.
Okay, well, it's property tax neutral is what they're saying. And as far as the notification aspect of it, Dory?
Whether we change it or not, we still have to notify people, right, or taxpayers.
All these go over revenue and monthly rate. However, those notifications do not start until twenty-two.
Now, is it a mill levy or a, or a dollar amount?
So we'll actually calculate a rate. And we, there's a calculation that's been provided. I'm actually preparing a presentation for you guys next time to kind of go through the details around that.
I'll probably jump in again.
Well, I wanted to have it done today, but that just didn't happen. But, but yeah, there's a calculation. I know that there's no notification required in twenty-two. You would only be required to have a hearing. And I believe that the state is assisting with the cost of notifications in twenty-two and twenty-three, I think for two years.
Okay. Update on the budgeting process. We have met with all the outside agencies now and reviewed their requests and provided in updates to their, to their efforts of the organization and so forth. So we'll be, begin the process of incorporating that into the county-wide budget document. Also began the process of meeting with departments last, last week. And we'll continue through that process now and so we can fully develop that budget document for your review as we did last year.
Has the outside agencies been pretty consistent with past requests, or are they getting carried away?
No, no, actually, we've been pretty consistent with, with them and learning more and more about the organization as well.
Those presentations will actually start at the next meeting. We've got about half of them scheduled for June seventh and the other half for the twenty-first.
Alrighty. Any questions?
I have a question back to this for just a minute longer.
Yes, sir.
Twenty-five thirty in Fannie County, I understand, is the fifty-two ninety in Garden City. Is that a total of both the county and the city's mill levy, mill levy equivalency?
No, actually not. That is the, what it would, what if, that was, that is the alternative for a property tax.
That is a four point four mils for the city that.
That, yeah, actually, it's four point six for the city of Garden City, two point four for the, for the county and seven point two for Holcomb.
Seven point four.
Seven point four.
Garden was how much?
Six. Yep.
You know, you're, what do I want to say? What do we call this?
Well, there'll be a PowerPoint presentation that, that Dory is starting to pull together based upon some information here and some other information.
PowerPoint works most places. I'm going to tell you, for Rotary, it would probably not work real well. Just better to stand and hand them up for sure and talk to them.
Okay.
Talking to a small, small group. And when they try to get things on Facebook, we, we have the, it's a jury-rigged system of trying to get that out and so.
Okay.
Okay.
Generation gap there?
No, it's just that last Wednesday, there were, there were six of us. So.
Once again, appreciate any and all comments on these information packets, pamphlets, so we can get them finalized and start to move them out.
To borrow one of Larry's comments earlier, the penny with the quarter pulled out of it, that's, that's a pretty neat little graphic there.
That was Robert's idea and Trey made it come to life.
Larry really.
Well, I just said we need to change, you know, Robert said something. He said, what's this BRMP? I said, well, that was an acronym that didn't ever work.
Okay, anything else, Robert?
I don't know if Commissioner Larry Jones wanted to share his acronym for it or not.
Oh, I, I told you, it turned out to be something not good.
Counselor, do you have anything to share?
Just briefly, just an update on the sales of those properties. We have two of the three contracts signed. The third one, it was emailed to the individual as opposed to the individual coming into the county office. We just need to follow up with him. I don't think that's a, I'm not concerned about that. We, on the contracts, we set the closing date to correspond with the June seventh commission meeting so that, you know, just to give us a drop dead date. If, if we need to sign off earlier, we sure can. But that's, that's the, the date of closing in those contracts for everyone.
And Linda on Eighth Street, we bought a piece of property, but there was a quarter acre, half acre, something that Tyler was in negotiations.
Yes.
He had an agreement for a while. What's happened there?
So that individual, it, I, we've been in touch. I finally mailed the contract to, that's a Mr. Hughes. He lives in Missouri. He and I had been playing phone tagging, et cetera, since I, since I took this role in March. And he indicated that, that planting had taken precedence over this. So hopefully he's done. And I, I told him I'd just put that in the mail. It seemed like, you know, I, I understood what the terms were of, of the purchase of that. And I just figured that way he could see it. If he had any problems, he could let me know. And maybe that's a better way for us to communicate is by snail mail, you know? So that's, that's where we're at on that. He's, he's just, he's communicative. It's just sometimes it's two weeks between conversations. So I, I think we're moving forward. It's just a slow process.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you. Larry?
Only a couple things to report. Attended a meeting, meeting with Lana and her folks with, along with you and Robert on West Side Development and long-range plans, which she will probably bring to the commission here next, I don't know, month or so.
Next meeting or two.
Next meeting or so. It's quite interesting. Also had a phone call from an individual. With the advent of the new cheese plant in Diet City, their operations, which cover multiple counties, were looking to expand considerably. And they were interested in what type of enhancements Fannie County had. And I told him to be in touch with Lana. They were a little concerned about, they had heard rumblings about the Praiser's Department on how areas are appraised and they're not, they were kind of concerned with that. Told him, if you have any more concerns, come address the commission. That's it.
I think I had the same phone call several of you guys did about the citizen with bypass to their property and her concerns. I think we all had that phone call, really. As you guys know, there's not a whole lot we could do with that. But biggest thing is I had the Fair Board meeting. I've got a little cute little brochure, they're big. Looking for a lot of different sponsors this year and it's, it's a very, I was impressed, guys. This, this, this upcoming fair this year is going to be a really good one. The goal is for the main Saturday is to have so many functions or activities you could go to that you can't get to them all to encourage coming back in years to come. And they've got everything, well, we got our mutton busting again. They like some judges. But anywhere from kitty tractor pulls to antique tractor pulls, concerts. It's just, it's going to be a good fair. They really put a lot of effort in this, a lot of thought, a lot of organization. So I think we'll be quite, quite pleased with the progress this Fair Board has made and the efforts they put forward. I was very impressed.
No outhouse decorating contest this year?
They didn't mention an outhouse decorating contest. But they have little face, little children decorating contests, so.
We actually judged that in years past, who could do the best. That's it?
Pretty much, yes, sir.
And mutton busting?
Oh, yeah, mutton busting.
Mutton busting's big. There is a point on the mutton busting. The muttons, the sheep seem to have stickers in them. So they're, they're considering using goat busting this year. We'll see if that happens or not. But goats instead of sheep. But we'll see. I don't, that's up in the air. They have, we had a lot of fun with it. Oh, and they do have a new complaint form that if anybody has a complaint, there's going to be forums around and you can identify it and we'll deal with it after the fair, not today. And it's, takes some of the pressure off the Fair Board members. I suggested you put a box that says it's Trump's fault, but they decided not to do that. But.
I have a handful of meetings to report on. The, the sales tax meeting that is hand, is held quarterly. Dwayne accompanied me and I was completely lost having never been to one. But is an opportunity for various departments to report on the fire station or the, the Jenny Barker Road, I'll get things out here and so on. So that was educational. Then on National Day for Prayer, we attended, as did Lon, prayer in the park. And I think we had five churches there. That at twelve noon to twelve forty-five is a nice turnout. Don't remember what morning it was, but it was right in early seventies. One morning, Robert and I appeared over at KIUL and spoke about our upcoming tax renewal initiative and, and COVID response and so on. So that was an interesting morning. I've already mentioned going to, to the city hall for the fire EMS status report on the architect's plans. And the IT department, I, I did use Carlos. I've got to tell you the little story because it's, it's a mystery. I got a note from Lana saying, here is some confidential file. I didn't have a confidential file, so I, I had a paperclip, like there should have been a file. So we looked all over and I called Lana and she tried it again. And she could get my, my email going to her, but not the other way. So it seems like on a Wednesday afternoon at four forty-three, my Cox email service was shut down. So doing battle with, with computers is not my, you know, I have a personality conflict. I went to the Cox office, no help. I talked to about four or five Cox folks. And finally it dawned on me, and I don't mean this to sound like it's going to sound, but I, they talk with an accent and they talk about things, little whirly gears and little spyglasses and things. I have no idea where that was. But I knew a guy that could speak their language and that's, his name is Carlos and he works in the basement. So I came over and less Carlos, in about twenty minutes, he had that all ironed out because he could take my, my email and put it over on their system. And then when Cox says, well, it's your system, Carlos could say, no, it's not. I'm sitting here and I can switch you from system to system. It's your problem. And a little bit, he had them, had them straightened out. Economic development meeting Larry mentioned, we met on some proposals for the future. Some of it we will see here in the next meeting or two. And then the letter and the phone call, email and the phone call with Susie Miller over the bypass, not a thing we can do about it. But, and then finally. This I found here when I came back from a meeting, is a letter from the sheriff announcing his, informing that he is retiring and his last day being Thursday, September thirty, twenty twenty-one respectfully. And if this needs to be officially entered into the file, I'm going to give it to you. Dory, because we've been officially notified.
It's got tape on it.
Yeah, it's, I cut it in two, I'm sorry. Anything else to come to our attention? Until the seventh of June, then we will stand adjourned. In the meantime, I'm going to Jacksonville, Florida. So I'm going to have a week's with grandkids. So anyway, thanks for your time. We are adjourned.